Vaughn?
How are you?
Yes, sir.
Andrew Freeman.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you. Google Docs, please. Mayor. And then affidavits for the publication of everything.
And all of this.
Yes. How are you, sir?
I'm working the club. I've seen you there.
Yeah, sure. We recognize you when you come up.
You know, I'm trying to say that.
I see you have this. You still can't commission up?
I bet it can. It was when Earl left the courthouse.
No, that's I understand. After that. What is this? Texas is still brothers.
Texas, how many years is this place in this right now? I don't know if there's a place in the nation that's better than this.
Will join commission?
I am. Yeah. I'm not saying. Four years. Six years. Yep. Well, I think what I should enjoy is doing this. Good job.
She's throwing a lady down. Better she wasn't.
I'm doing wonderful. I'll just say it doesn't like sound good. Well, that's kind of really good.
But she's looking out. All my fire.
But he was her brother. That's got a really good stat.
Vaughn. She's probably good.
All good. If it worked for Vaughn.
Jack and I first ran into each other.
Well, I worked in an address.
Then after.
Really. I mean, I was a person. Mama. I started. I'm with you.
That's very good.
You know.
I'm sixty-four. Take the job you stayed in places that you built. Very good. I guess. So. She's great. She's really good. Therapy. He's always small. The hair. Now looking for.
Worry weeks.
Thank you. Thank you. He's got.
Point two. Oh. There's. It's his. And. Great duty.
It is. Going to D C M S. I think we're doing a better. I haven't.
I'm the most responsible by. Weekend.
Thank you. That's older than. And the one we're. We were. For.
That's why I get a better. So.
You do. It's got the color.
Yeah.
See, I would. That's over. Boy, we here now. And then going to there.
Turn our.
We're going to give them power for the nation.
People here. Mine. I just. So.
Okay. We're waiting. I know. He's. No. It's on that.
Yes, please. They'll say, well. You got one here. Still a place on your business. We're supporting. Always improve. And you, I think you give me all the water. Right now.
Hello. They said. He's.
Statesman.
What did I? You're saying?
Well, since that all the places to make it before that.
Yes.
He said.
I remember.
Sorry, that's deep. Now. We're. While. The next. Then. Eventually. Well.
You're right.
And you know.
I'm thinking about. More get to. My past weeks. To say. Hey, how are you? I'm running late. You know, I left for a grand long. I don't. I'm. I'm in the house. I'm with you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm. She had to bed. Yeah. It's good. We're talking. Yeah. Here. Oh, yeah. Oh, well. We're. Yeah. Because.
Actually, we'll be sitting here with this guy right here. Big yes. I don't know. I won't bite, honest.
That's good.
Everybody. Everybody. Everybody.
Line up.
Yeah. It's like.
I can get some. I get. I'm. Can't help myself.
I'll keep you up. I got. I got a lot. You know, I'm not supposed to play. Come on. I'm just telling you. This one's still out. Next. Or. Or. I'm. Well, you can. I was. You know.
Tell me.
And, you know, I'm like. Oh. I'm. I never. I don't know. I'm. Like. I'm.
I had. Where's this? Well, where else?
I'm interviewing. Interviewing. I'm. Required. I go back. Actually, my.
These are. I don't. I'm. He said. He's not here good till.
It's. Yeah.
What do you see?
You see. Tell me.
You're.
And. Like. You know, what I need to do is. I don't know. Idea. So. I want. Yeah. I'm. Right.
Oh, that's. Yeah. That's.
Hey. I was.
I can see on the.
The same thing.
I'm. And.
This is.
We all chase him. He's for days. I'm drinking. I'm. The world is about the.
That's quite. Usually. Five o'clock.
Yes.
Yes. I'm. Sure. And. I want. You can. And. Be them.
And they fell apart. Yeah. Or. Ice. That's. It takes fifteen. Off. And out there. Going.
Everyone.
We've got it. Like. This. But this. There we go.
So the problem is when it's a pain. Have the other problem. When it's a pain, the feeling of pain. It's not as if you can just take out where it must. We. I gotta go. Take a little slack with the system. Nicky. Yeah. I'm. Sure. So while Brett's kind of. Watch. Right there. We have. Three. Yeah, I don't want to happen. It's huge. Something. That. Sixteen eighteen. And. It's. But it's not. Don't. It's. It's. Part. So. Hope. I told her. I don't have. Too bad. I'm going to pour the. Come on. I'm. I'm.
I've got you. I'm. Your. Life.
I'm. I didn't. I'm. I'm. I could want to.
My heart.
It's. Right.
I think.
More. She's. Wait. You've been here all my feet. I didn't have a lot. But. Those are not the walls, too. I mean. I stepped out. For last yesterday. I used to have that. He was in my feet. And he just stood there. Like he wasn't. I waited for me to take a picture. In those same. Those. Bars. Here's. I'm. In. So. Dance. Everything we might do. But. Oh, my. Many. Like. We. Now. We don't have birds. Like you. We. So. So they're. Swirls. You guys are all here.
I have a hawk and bird.
Okay, now I have a better. But. But yeah. I'm. Nine. I mean. I mean.
Seven o'clock. It's time to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of Ransus Pass. Here at six hundred West Cleveland Boulevard. Ransus Pass, Texas. Of April twenty-first, twenty fourteen, seven P M. Will stand up, give invitation. Please, Rod.
Lord, I'd like to give thanks for the blessings you gave us this weekend. Also, the special blessings to the loved ones that were lost over the week. Also, the ones that aren't feeling too well. Hopefully, your guidance and love and care will help the people that are. They need it the most. Also, pray for our city workers and everybody that's doing their job. Make sure you watch and over guide us tonight as we come to our decisions of whatever comes before us. Thank you, Lord, for blessing our children and allow us to be around for another day. Amen.
Set the legacies of the flag. United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. On the nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
This will bring us to item number three, the consent agenda. All the fallen items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City of Council. Will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless this items or council member's sole request. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Which will be item number eight, consider the minutes of March seventeenth and April seventh, twenty fourteen. I know we have an issue.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve both the minutes with, on April seventh, the correction on item five, please.
Second. Oh, fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye. This will bring us to item number four, presentation of the fair housing by Ms. Lauren. How do you spell that last name?
Cotwell.
Cotwell. From Grant Works Incorporated, consider they act on it. For A, B, and C. Go ahead.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Lauren Cotwell with Grant Works. I'm here tonight to present on the three fair housing action items. The first is the fair housing activity statement. The fair, Oransus Pass's fair housing activity statement, or FAST, was prepared by the city's fair housing work group in July of twenty twelve with Grant Works assistance. The Texas General Land Office requires that the FAST be adopted prior to the close of your disaster recovery project. And this resolution, the first resolution tonight, will adopt the FAST as the city's fair housing action plan. So first, I'm going to give just a little bit of background information about why the city has to complete this plan. And then I'll go over as briefly as I can what's covered in the plan and the actions that will be required from the city moving forward. So first, a little bit of background. Fair housing is the right of all people to be free from discrimination in the rental sale or financing of housing. It prohibits discrimination in public and private housing on the basis of race, color, national origin, religion, gender, disability, and familial status. While provisions to affirmatively further fair housing are longstanding parts of HUD's housing and community development project programs. The reason that fair housing became such a big issue with the DRS projects a few years ago is that before the state accessed their round two funds, housing advocates filed a complaint to HUD alleging that the planned distribution of funds was in violation of fair housing regulations and the state's analysis of impediments need to be updated. At this time, the fair housing advocates submitted a massive report that identified all the impediments to fair housing. And this giant list was narrowed down to a list of sixteen impediments that local governments can sort of have a hand in actually working with. So Oransus Pass's FAST is organized around these sixteen impediments and identifies local action that the city will take in order to demonstrate your commitment to improving fair housing in the area. And we do know that G O L, G L L, G L O will be reviewing compliance efforts periodically. They just asked for all the documentations of these efforts for all of round two point two projects. So it is something that we're going to have to complete and keep documentation of as you go along. So I'm going to just quickly go through the list of impediments and just try to highlight some of the local action that will need to be done, but please feel free to stop me if there's any specific questions. Going to try to just do a big picture overview. Impediment one has to do with lending and mortgage rates, and this doesn't require any local action. Impediment two has to do with the real estate community, so again, no local action on your parts required. Impediment three addresses public awareness, and this one does require a little bit of work. The working group selected that the city will commit to undertake fair housing month activities through the passage of April is fair housing month resolution. And by placing housing posters in public buildings and on the website, and also placing ads in the local newspaper. Impediment four has to do with the idea that a not in my backyard or NIMBY mentality may be an impediment to fair housing throughout Texas communities. The local response to this impediment would be the development of an anti-NIMBYism action plan. And that's something that Grant Works is in the process of pulling together guidance for, and we should be able to get a plan done for y'all this year. Impediment five encompasses a lot, and it requires that the city review policy plans, procedures, and planning processes to ensure that everything affirmatively furthers fair housing. Many of these activities under this impediment are addressed by the local policies and practices document, which is also up for adoption by resolution tonight. And another requirement is a fair housing training, which Grant Works is currently trying to locate or organize, and hopefully we'll be able to do something this year with that. But in order to be in full compliance with this impediment and many of the other impediments in the FAST, the city's going to have to conduct and document reviews of these types of plans and codes. And we're really waiting for some guidance from the state about how to conduct these reviews and how to actually document that as we move forward. Impediment six identifies the need for government entities to be proactive in the enforcement of both the Fair Housing Act and to affirmatively further fair housing. And a big part of this, the local action for this impediment, is setting up procedures for fair housing complaints. So again, another resolution up for your consideration tonight will set up this complaint procedure. It basically involves posting flyers in public buildings and on websites and maintaining a complaint log and several other actions. Impediment seven involves reviewing city ordinances and codes, including the zoning code and long-term planning documents to ensure that none of these impede fair housing choice. Again, the local fair housing policies and practices that's up for your consideration tonight will address some of this. But again, the city will need to conduct these reviews, and again, we're hoping that the state provides some guidance on this impediment as well. Impediment eight addresses inadequate planning for rehousing after an emergency. So the local action for this impediment is to review zoning and consider waivers to allow temporary housing, such as FEMA trailers on property while a house is being rebuilt after a disaster. Impediment nine looks at the ways, or looks at the ways codes and ordinances impact people with special needs or disabilities. And so this is another one where a review of codes and ordinances is called for. Impediment ten has to do with fair housing choice vouchers and no local actions required. Impediment eleven requires a statewide strategic plan, and this does not require any local action either. Impediment twelve addresses the need for a section three program, and Grant Works has all the documentation that you will need to show that this activity's been completed. Impediment thirteen seeks to increase the fair housing choices for persons with disabilities. The local action with this will be to formally consider establishing incentives for units designed for people with disabilities in affordable housing development, as an example. Impediment fourteen addresses the need to provide sufficient infrastructure and protections against flooding for people living in colonias. The working group in the plan stated that since the city has already identified and will continue to consider underserved, unserved infrastructure needs of colonias, no additional local actions required, so that's good. Impediment fifteen has to do with state insurance issues and doesn't require any local action. And impediment sixteen seeks to improve record keeping of fair housing complaints. So again, the fair housing complaint procedure that's up for you tonight will take care of that one. Are there any questions about the fair housing action plan?
Council, she mentioned disaster recovery two and colonial initiatives. Disaster recovery one is the first repair of the bulkhead, which is along where the city's transient docks in Redfish Bay area. Disaster recovery two is along that section of bulkhead that is still. We just advertise it will be going out of the way for construction, but all that is in conjunction with the money's received.
Yeah, so G L O will require that the FAST is adopted and implemented before the closeout of those projects can occur. The next resolution before you tonight is for the local fair housing policies and practices. The purpose of this document is to describe more specific steps that the city will take to implement the adopted fair housing action plan. So it calls out the various reviews that are going to be needed. And after each action listed in that policies and practices, there's a number that references a section of the action plans that you can see what part is implementing. And then the last resolution will implement the fair housing complaint procedure. The fair housing action plan requires the city to have clear procedures for fair housing, complaint process, and record keeping. And the purpose of this procedure is to ensure timely and accurate processing and record keeping of fair housing complaints. So.
Any questions? Mr. President? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So do I hear a motion? On the science three on the zero nine number four?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty fourteen, seven twenty-three, fair housing activity statement. Resolution twenty fourteen, seven twenty-four, fair housing policies and practices. Resolution twenty fourteen, seven twenty-five, fair housing recording and reporting complaints.
Second.
Oh, fair say aye?
Aye.
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 Does it bring us to item number five, a presentation of the San Patricio County Economic Development District by Ms. Lynn Spencer?
Here.
Does this come out of here? I'm too short for these things. There. Sylvia, Mayor Council, thanks for having me out this evening. I am Lynn Spencer with the San Patricio Economic Development Corporation, for those who haven't met me yet. I just want to tell you about some things we have going on in the county this year that we will be getting ORANZAS Pass actively involved with. Earlier last year, we went to Austin for the first San Patricio Day on the Hill, and as a result, we worked with the Economic Development Administration and received a grant for $375,000 to address some issues that our region had identified in San Patricio County in the larger regional comprehensive economic development strategy. Those four areas that were identified, one was a lack of data for San Patricio County as a whole. When businesses are coming to town and looking for data and information, there isn't one place to find a lot of data. So a lot of these site selectors, where 85% of site selectors are using the website to look at your place before they ever come and talk to you, we didn't have a concise website. So we're getting a, with the thanks in partnership with Shinnier Energy, we're hiring a professional web developer and have hired a writer to get their website up to date. The second thing is GIS information as a whole. If somebody wanted to look at our county and look at somewhere in Mathis and ORANZAS Pass and Ingleside at the same time with just different layers of GIS data, they'll be able to do that on our website using ArcGIS Online. Two of the other major things that are going on are an economic development strategy for our county. In addition to that is a San Patricio County Training Center feasibility study to see if it makes sense to have a training center in our county that would help respond to some of these industrial needs. Just to give you an example, we had our first meeting in Taft on March 27th. This was done in complete partnership with the City of Taft, Taft Independent School District, the Chamber of Commerce, and probably leaving off some other people. But they all came together, and we had 10% of the population come out for this public meeting, and we ran out of food. It was very successful. But basically, what we're going to do is we're going to partner with the City of ORANZAS Pass and the school district to identify a date and a chamber, to identify a date, to invite the community out to look at doing what's called a Strength, Weaknesses, Opportunities, and Threats for ORANZAS Pass and as the county as a whole. And so instead of me standing on a stage and asking people for questions, we're going to have interactive tabletops where there'll be a map of the community, and people will be looking at where they want to develop, where they see weaknesses. And basically, what comes out of it for the EDC is because our EDC is basically a compilation of the nine municipalities and chambers of commerce, we like to see what projects we're supposed to be working on. So when I come and I talk to Sylvia, she knows exactly what I'm working on, what businesses I'm trying to attract to the area, whether it's a housing development or company. I know exactly what you want here, what you don't want here, where you'd want it, where the land is to, when people come to town, I can tell them where to go. And so that's the goal, to come out of the economic development strategy or actual projects for the EDC to partner with the city so we can, whether it's going after grant funds for a park or going after, like I said, figuring out what businesses we want to go after and how we're going to do that. And so that's what's going to come out of the meeting. The second thing that will come out of the meeting is a survey of information from the community about whether or not they think a training center would be a good idea and whether it makes sense for it to be in ORANZAS Pass or perhaps somewhere else in the county. Because part of this process we'll be doing is site evaluation, where we're going to be looking at different sites throughout the communities to see where it would make sense to put one of these things. We're doing this in partnership with Delmar College and the Texas Workforce Solutions. Delmar College and workforce are doing what we call inside the building. They're looking at curriculum and capital improvements and what teachers they would need in courses. That, we're not in the education system, but what we're looking at is what we call the outside of the building, which is where's it going to go, who's going to use it, where can we draw from, and will it make an economic impact to the community that goes into? And that's the bottom line for getting EDA funding to build the building, is the economic impact. These training centers tend to be catalyst projects for communities, whether it's a downtown revitalization and you want to position it somewhere where you get foot traffic because you'll have students coming in, or if there's an area in your community where you just want to see people come back into the area, these training centers are great for economic catalyst projects. So that's sort of wraps up what the presentation will be about. So what we're going to do, like I mentioned, we'll be partnering and probably sitting down with Sylvia to come up with a date and identifying which school to have it in. We had it at Petty Elementary School because people are very comfortable coming to their elementary school. One of the things that Taft did, we always say, food brings people to a meeting and door prizes help them stay. We had 60 door prizes donated at the Taft public meeting. We had 250 people there until it ended getting door prizes, so that was actually a big thing. So we'll be asking for the chamber to help us work with the local businesses to try to get door prizes for that night. And they were simple little door prizes. We're not talking trips to Alaska. We're talking a fishing pole, a water cooler that, you know, says ORANZAS Pass High School, something, just local, something easy. So that's where we're headed, and that's the plan. And so, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Really, it's time to know what's going on at Degusa.
I'll have to research that one. I'm not entirely sure.
There's a lot of demolition going on.
Is there? Oh, good. That's good to know. I sort of, we were dealing with Degusa about a year ago, and it kind of dropped off because we weren't able to get ahold of the company. And I know we put some pressure on some of our elected officials to find out why they were not moving, but I'll go research that a little bit back and get back with you. But there's some other things that we're working on. I know we can't really talk about them right now that we are working on with ORANZAS Pass, so we are working with you. There's some good things coming, and hopefully we'll be able to say something about it someday. But for the moment, like I said, we want to, free food. So we will be trying to find a sponsor to help us with that. And we did have the workforce volunteering their time to cook, and it just depends on what you guys want to have. We also encourage elected officials to come to that meeting. I know the one in Taft, we had, you know, you have to post it as a public meeting, so we had the council there, we had the school board, all was there. We need as many volunteers, because we only have a few staff people on board. So we need a lot of volunteers from, we had, like, the school board volunteered, and the council members, and the mayor. Everybody was up there helping gather this information. And, you know, we discovered very, I discovered a long time ago, because I've been doing public affairs for 20 years, that, you know, people, when you ask them, just like I asked you, "Does anybody have any questions?", no one will ever raise their hand. But if you put it in a table situation where they don't have to, you know, become public, you know, targets, then they're more willing to participate. So that's it, and we look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, I don't know if counsel's aware, but all the municipalities within the San Patricio EDC area contribute 50 cents per population to the EDC. So does the service they provide to us. So the more we partner with them, the greater the return is on that. Minimization.
This will bring us to item number six, considering an approved suspension of the implementation of CenterPoint Energy's proposed gas reliability infrastructure program interim rate adjustment for 45 days once 60 days after its initial filing has passed.
Mayor Council, this really is just a delay tactic on the city's part on behalf of its residents who use CenterPoint Energy. Utility has allowed rate increases without much public demand. This is the city's opportunity to spend that rate increase during the time we would have the opportunity to review the public filings with the Utility Commission. Right now, CenterPoint is recommending a dollar per customer per month for residential, $2.03 for small service companies, and $12.54 for large general service customers. So the action by counsel would delay implementation for 45 days. Every little bit helps. It's true.
Is there any questions on this? Do I hear a motion for or against it?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the suspension of the implementation of CenterPoint Energy's gas reliability infrastructure program interim rate adjustment for 45 days once 60 days after its initial filing has passed.
I second.
All the favors there are?
Aye.
Aye.
This will bring us to item number seven, eight, considering an approved bond items, which A is a resolution of the City Council, City of ORANZAS Pass, Texas authorizing improvement publication of the notice of the intention to issue certificates of obligation applying with the requirements contained in Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15C 2-12, providing an effective date. Then item B is a resolution relating to establishing the city's intentions to reimburse itself for the prior lawful expenditure of funds related to the constructive various city improvements and the proceeds of the tax exempt obligations to be issued by the city for authorized purposes, authorizing other matters incident and related thereto, and providing an effective date.
Mayor Council, we have bond counsel here to discuss the sale of the bonds and the total in monies. Item B is, as you're aware, many of the items proposed are part of equipment. Part of equipment has longer lead time. In addition, there are some savings items to be had, so we're trying to capitalize on an opportunity to purchase equipment at a much lower rate for our various city improvements. So item B would be a resolution authorizing the expenditure from city funds and reimbursing ourselves with the bond funds. But I have Southwest Securities Mark McLean here answering the question.
Andrew Freeman will go through the presentation.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. What Mark's handing out, a quick handout, we had visited a couple of months ago now about potentially going out and issuing certificates of obligation for various projects. And I know that you all and Sylvia have sat down and sharpened your pencils and decided which of those projects you'd like to pursue and fund with this certificate of obligation. And so today and tonight, the action item authorizing a notice of intention begins that process for us. You're notifying citizens that you're going to go out for certificates of obligation to fund these projects, and they're outlined in the notice of intention resolution. This first page that I have for you is a timetable that we're going to be following and trying to stick with. You can see there, the first emboldened item, Monday, April 21st this evening, authorizing a notice of intention as well as reimbursement resolution. We'll publish that notice of intention in the legal paper once per week for two consecutive weeks, beginning sometime this week. 30 days after that first publication, we can go out and actually bid out these certificates of obligation and then bring those bids back to you all as a council to review and either accept and authorize the sale of certificates of obligation. And that would happen on the regular meeting, Monday, June 2nd, where we would come back. And that would be an official action and a binding sale at that time. There is no action tonight other than to approve the resolution. That doesn't bind you to issuing the certificates of obligation. It just allows us, as your financial advisor, to begin this process, going out, solicit for bids, and then bring back those results, final interest rates, and a final structure for your review. You'll notice the par amount is $9.5 million. I know that the projects overall exceed $10 million. The city can recognize some interest rate savings if you issue bank-qualified. And what that means is you receive, in today's market, roughly 0.5% less interest rate if you endeavor to issue less than $10 million in debt in a single year. And so we've selected $9.5 million to give us a little bit of wiggle room through the rest of the year because your capital leases and other things apply. And so we're managing that and trying to take it as close to that $10 million as we can because we believe that 0.5% lower interest rate, it makes a big difference over the life of 20-year certificates of obligation. Behind the first page you'll see is a debt service capacity analysis. It was one that I had shared back with you a couple of months ago, and then we've since honed. And what this outlines is, starting from the far-left column, the existing debt, you can see, beginning in fiscal year 2014 and moving all the way to 2027, the general obligation debt burden on the general fund. And the structure and consideration that we're using here is how to issue $6.5 million of COs that's going to be funded entirely by the general fund without raising taxes. And so you can see here, the total debt service for the $6.5 million, which is just the portion that's going to be supported by the general fund, is going to keep that total debt service payment for 2015 and forward, when we begin paying the debt service on these new bonds, at or below the existing debt service, so we won't have to raise INS tax rates when we issue these certificates of obligation. And you'll see $6.5 million, $9.5 million. There's $3 million on Page Two that's going to be supported by the Water and Sewer Fund. And so those together equal that $9.5 million. And then you can see here, the $3 million of certificates of obligation that'll be supported by the Water and Sewer Fund. And our analysis on this page takes into consideration additional garbage revenues, I guess is what we'd call it, that Sylvia's been able to negotiate with y'all's garbage collector that's going to allow us to support some more towards this $3 million in COs. But I do want to note that these numbers are all based on the 2012 audit. We do not have the 2013 numbers available to us yet, but this is all based on 2012. Once we have the 2013 audit available, which should be very soon, we'll be able to update this. But ultimately, it shows what that impact on the Water and Sewer Fund will be. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have about this issuance. And then, of course, regarding the reimbursement resolution, Sylvia explained it perfectly. It just allows you to start spending money now, today or tomorrow, and then pay yourself back once the bonds have been sold.
Counsel, I wanted to point something out to you on the debts on the utility system. Right now, this, well, in the past, the city has been reliant on some monies in from the Water Sewer Fund transferred into the general fund to offset some of those expenses. We're going to do that better from now on. Those water sewer revenues really are to maintain and upgrade and repair and install a water sewer system. They are not necessarily to be balancing the general fund. And although we've been doing that, and that is not illegal and is common in a bunch of other cities, we're looking for efficiencies internally, whether that's a reduction of staff, whether that's a consolidation of services, all of those things to bring that reduction down from the Water Sewer Fund so that our actual utility debt is just for that, utility debt. So I know that's a big topic on the plating that we're going to talk about. And then every dollar that we save obviously helps us, and so the negotiation with our solid waste provider and our continued negotiations of three years when the contract ends, that comes into play. So it's important to say, I hope you're all seeing how these things are all intricately interrelated. Can you tell us what the current interest rate is right now? What are we looking at?
Right now, we conservatively run these numbers at 4.5%. Again, that's a conservative estimate. We like to come in and show kind of a worst-case scenario for what the total payments may be on this. I would expect the interest rate when we come time to sell and accept bids on June 2nd to be quite a bit lower.
Did the last one come in at like 1% or something?
And interest rates have remained near the historic lows. They're a little bit higher than last time that we went out for certificates of obligation, but they have remained very, very low, looking at bond yields historically. So we're still in a very, very advantageous So we're still in a very, very advantageous position.
Questions? But then I do want to bring up though is our Exhibit A, what we're going to plan to use the money for, people don't realize what it's intended for. I'll just read it real quick. Of course, we're looking at nine point five mil. And then we're looking at the city's imperative permanent public improvements for public purposes, which is constructing, acquiring, purchasing, renovating, enlarging, improving the city parks, recreational facilities, constructing street improvements, which includes the utility repair, replacement, relocation. You're also looking at constructing curbs, gutters, and renovating, enlarging, improving the city's utility system, constructing drainage improvements throughout the city. Looking at making public signage, lighting, and pedestrian areas improvements in the downtown area, constructing, acquiring, purchasing, renovating, enlarging, improving the Combron Harbor system, which we have right now. We're also looking at making information technology infrastructure of the right-of-ways for authorized needs and purposes related to aforementioned facilities. And item nine says the payment of these professional services related to design, construction, project management, financing, as aforementioned, projects, these certificates of obligations, these are what this is intended for. So you're looking for a lot of major infrastructure, which, like Sammy says, this is all put people over the seat.
It's not the sexy part.
Right. But it's what's needed to help improve what we have already. You know, it's lifelong residence. A lot of y'all know, you know, we're in dire need of improving a lot of things, and this is going to help us get on the right track. Just to clarify what it's for, in case there's any questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Right, about raising taxes?
Yes, that's the beauty of it.
Well, this will bring us to item B, which is a resolution relating to establishing the city's intentions to reimburse itself prior lawful expenditures of funds relating to construction of various city improvements from the proceeds of tax exempt obligations to be issued by the city for authorized purposes, authorizing other matters incident related thereto, and providing an effective date.
As, as to date, we have discussed the park equipment and park equipment at Community Park, McCamber Park, and that really is just the actual hardscapes, the play features. It is not any of the underground and drainage and lighting, just the actual features is about half a million dollars.
What about the playground surfaces? Isn't that a problem at the Johnson Park?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to be addressing those services, but the reimbursement resolution itself is just for the actual equipment.
Just for the equipment?
It's the, the swingsets, the seesaws.
So do I hear a motion for item number seven?
I make a motion that we approve a resolution by the city to, what is it, authorizing and approving the publication of notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation and be a resolution relating to establishing the city intention to reimburse itself the prior lawful expenditure of funds relating to the construction of various city improvements. And the effective date?
Would it be tonight?
It would be tonight.
Yes.
Effective date, tonight. April the twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
I second the motion.
I'm second.
Doesn't matter.
Don't matter.
How was it against them?
First and another second.
Aye. Excellent.
Would we make a random motion?
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it, gentlemen.
We'll be getting with you all, keep working this thing through.
Thank you.
This will bring us to item number eight. Consider an act on approving the request of hot funds not to exceed seven thousand five hundred by the Wounded Warrior Fan Club, the Bay Rack Chapter, for the Coast to Big Classic, Classic and Custom Car Show scheduled for August thirtieth and thirty-first at the Ranses Pass Civic Center. I know we have some people here, but it's big.
Yes, sir, I'm Alan Jones, and this is Sylvia Mackish. We represent the fan club. What we're trying to do, we had a car show last year, we raised over twelve thousand dollars profit. And we're taking that, that money, we're donating five thousand to the wounded, to the Warrior Weekend in Port O'Connor. And then we're also going to take the portion of that fund, so we're going to have a dinner here in Ranses Pass for, what's the name of the, the other one? I wrote it down. It's for the Warrior Weekend, and then in Rockport, it's going to be the Heroes Cup. We're going to have the dinner for those soldiers here in town, and then they're going to fish over the weekend. And that's what we're doing with our money. And we're asking for money for this next year so we can have a bigger and larger car show, raise more money, and hopefully get on board with this Wounded Warrior Weekend. They're going to have over eight hundred soldiers they bring in to fish in Port O'Connor for the weekend. And so that's our sole purpose, is to help raise money for the Wounded Warriors, so we can help our local area soldiers.
What are the time? I'm just curious.
It's going to be...
Is it?
Actually, the...
This year's going to be August thirtieth and thirty-first, two days.
The car show will be due next?
It's going to be two days. We're going to have activity Friday night. We're looking at either a street dance or some kind of a movie projection or a hot rod show. Saturday, we're going to have a car show here at the community center, and then we'll have a dance that night. And then we'll come back Sunday and do award presentations about two o'clock that afternoon.
Can you, you guys, I just reviewing your application, you booked a few rooms, I see?
Yes, we have thirty rooms booked here in town already.
Good deal.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion for approval on item number eight?
I make a motion that we approve hot funds not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars for the Wounded Warrior Weekend or Wounded Warrior Fan Club on August thirtieth and thirty-first.
Second.
All the first say aye?
Aye.
This will bring us to item number nine. Consider an act on approving entering into a lease agreement with Cooper Billboards for advertising.
Mayor and council, Cooper Billboards currently has two billboards on city property that they pay annual rent to the city of Ranses Pass. The negotiation with Cooper Billboards has been to keep the current rent, but to allow the city opportunity to advertise on those billboards planned not in use. Currently, we have the billboard that is right outside the Civic Center that we're going to be posting our, not only our bond projects, but important messages such as the city cleanup days that we'll be talking about here a little bit, as well as any important events with, with the community. We also have the sign that's coming in from Port of Ranses, that's also a Cooper Billboard sign on city property. And they've graciously agreed to allow us to advertise, and just then in the artwork, they'll get the vinyls put up, and so the signs are advertised, are sold.
This is to keep their current lease?
Yes.
Well, I make a motion that we enter into a lease, lease agreement with Cooper Billboards for advertising.
Second.
All the first say aye?
Aye.
Bring us to item ten. Consider an act on approving fireworks display at the Ranses Pass Community Park.
The council, we have discussed a budgeted item for a fireworks display down at the harbor for the Fourth of July celebration. Unfortunately, we missed a hundred and twenty-day notice to Mariners. And logistically, an eight-hundred-foot clearance is required, and we'd have to close waterways and loading, and Fourth of July is a very, very, very busy day down at the park. So the alternative, these are the gentlemen who will be providing the display, the alternative is down at Community Park, which would coincide with our groundbreaking, which would coincide with all of the improvements that are happening down at the park, and is actually a very good distance. We would have to close the Aquatic Center earlier in the day, but the elevation at Community Park would make it visible really throughout the city. This is going to be the first Fourth of July display the city has had, so.
Good evening. My name is Bob Schumaker, and I represent Western Enterprises of Carrier, Oklahoma. I'm a senior technician and also a marketing rep. We've been in, I've been in the business since nineteen seventy. I've represented Western Enterprises for about twenty years. I've resided in Rockport for going on seventeen years now. And other shows that we do in this area are the City of Corpus Christi and the Keywood Show, and we previously did Victoria. The contact is kind of late in the season to be entering into a contract, but it can be done. We, we had to verify first that we had the personnel and the licensed personnel to take on another show, which we do. We did, like Mrs. Creo mentioned, considered the Con Brown Harbor, but there's just way too many problems with putting on a fireworks show down there and restrictions and the safety zones that are required. But out at your aquatic park, there's a couple of different places that we could conduct or discharge the fireworks show. And I've done some preliminary measurements out there, and we'll, we'll have to do some more, but I've done enough that I'm confident that that would be a good site to do, you know, what you're planning. Being it is late, a lot of, lots of times, most of the time, contracts are done in the late fall or early winter, and they're out of the way, so we have a lot of catching up to do. So it's imperative that we, we get rolling on this starting tonight. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question as far as the exact location, Community Park, is that by the Aquatic Center?
It's actually at the far end of one of the softball fields.
It'd be the, be the north side of the, the pool.
And the primary reason is for safety. I mean, that's, that's...
I understand, because I know that the Little League Park, the Little League is usually having all-star tournaments usually around that, that time there, so that was just my question.
Yeah, we'll have to, the show, we'd have to clear the eight-hundred-foot radius by seven p.m. that afternoon, and so logistically, we're going to work with PD and fire, the fire marshal and the fireworks display people to clear the radius. But we've, we've measured out, it seems to be almost the perfect.
We'll have to have a couple of days to set this thing up prior. It's a, it's a labor of love. It's, it takes a lot of time.
It does, but it's worth it.
And it's worth it, so.
I have just one question on that.
What'd he say?
Thirty-minute show.
The show we did recently, we did the Oyster Fest, anybody went out there off a barge? That was our show. Yeah. Like I said, we do the, the City of Corpus Christi on the Lexington on Fourth of July, we do Keywood, we do Rockport's Christmas show, so. I've been working, my name's Charles L. Cho, by the way. Some of you might know me, I used to be a coach in this town just a little over a year ago. I used to play football and softball. And I've been working with Bob for about eight years now.
About that?
Yeah. I'm going to take it over someday.
Good, then it's a good discount.
I failed to mention that these, all our, most of our shows are all choreographed to music. So there'll be a music soundtrack, you have to, you have to get up with some sound company to provide a sound stage, because trying to, trying to get a radio station onboard at this late stage, I can tell you from previous experience, it, it won't happen. If, if, there's no radio station near here, so that's kind of out of the question. Usually, when you're getting into pricing, minutes, on average, a choreographed musical show, you're looking at seventeen to eighteen hundred dollars a minute, on average. Things have to be considered, the site, extra labor involved or whatever, that's a little, you know, that figure is variable. And long shows, here's, here's a good bet you can pull on your friends. Maybe some of you have gone to Walt Disney World in Florida, you've watched the fireworks down there. Ask your friends how long that fireworks show lasts. You'll hear all types of answers. Twenty, twenty-five, thirty, forty-five, eight minutes. That's all it is. Eight minutes of fireworks. There's other, there's some dull spots in there, dead spots, but of fireworks, it's only eight minutes.
For the lifetime of memories.
But doing something in thirty minutes, it's, we do shows thirty minutes, you get into some high-dollar shows. Average, Keywood's a little bit different, it's a longer show, sixteen, seventeen minutes at the most, but the, the money has to be there to cover that. And the minimum amount on the Fourth of July window is fifteen thousand.
For us, we counsel for a minimum of twenty thousand, and we're also still seeking sponsorships, other five thousand dollar sponsorships. And that's really to go with the choreography, and also it's an opportunity for the city to showcase its services and things, so we will have other events out there. PD will have a presence, Ranses Park will have a presence, and the city as a whole will have.
I might just make a comment. I met Bob fifteen years ago, and that was the year he was going to retire from doing this. They put on such a good show, the, the one at Fulton Harbor, our Oyster Fest this time was incredible. It was incredible. But they, they keep coming back and keep turning people down. I'm really surprised it's taken a little bit longer.
I was really nice, Jack.
I bet you were.
We enjoy doing it, yes.
There's some more questions, appreciate it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for approval, item number ten?
I make a motion that we approve the fireworks display at the Ranses Pass Community Park.
I would ask that you include that motion in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand.
Sure. And also, in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand.
I second.
All the first say aye?
Aye.
This brings title number eleven. Consider an act on approving Combron Harbor item eight, which is LNV, scope of work not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred dollars, and approving authorization to proceed.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, we have, with the, dismissed of our prior engineering firm, we have a variety of environmental projects that need to be wrapped up, final reports submitted. This proposal would allow LNV to basically give us a summary of operations of all of our open projects, give us the steps necessary to proceed, and then also get us on the road closing out a good portion of this project.
Would this be the project of JBS?
JBS, Coastline, Gulf King, there's one more, Trade Tract, LWR. I miss one.
He's over there.
I'm missing one. What am I missing? I gave you five.
I don't remember the, all the names, but we use the, the state's database system to determine all sites or potential sites within the area will be working on for the state's officials.
Do I hear a motion for approval, item number eleven?
I make a motion that we approve the LNV's scope of work not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred and approving the authorization to proceed.
Second.
All the first say aye?
Aye.
This will bring us to item number twelve. Consider an act on building department items, which would be, A, public hearing, how can we do a public hearing without...
I'll open the public hearing and give the audience an opportunity to comment.
Item A, lost to you, then, Sylvia.
At this point, we'll open a public hearing on the request of Yen Incorporated to rezone from the general business district to a manufactured housing district and to replat the requested rezoned property described as part of tract four and five, block seventy-two, McCamble, two point zero two four acres to Portobello Village Incorporated. Due in business as Portobello Village RV Park, Park Lots one through five, block seventy-two, McCamble, Portobello Village, MH Park, twenty-four acres. The property is described part of tract four and five, block seventy-two, McCamble, two point zero two four acres. The property is currently zoned GB General Business. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing and give the audience an opportunity to comment on the requested rezoning.
Floor's now open. Is anybody would like to make a comment? Please speak up and slip off, state your name and your business.
The, um, the item is up on the screen, it is a request from the existing R V Park to, um, expand, uh, their footprint to a current piece of property and replanning that property in.
What is the actual physical location, I mean, we have the, the technical term, but where is it actually?
Here's, it's on, it's on screen, this is, uh, Lilo. Go ahead, Mrs. Terry Orff.
I'm Terry Orff, local architect, and just a side note, so y'all know, I'm the guy who actually programs and choreographs the harbor lights on the bridge to his fireworks show.
Well, there you go, we have a local.
Ah, you know, okay. But what this is, is, uh, there, there, this has always been part of Portobello, it's just that in Aransas Pass history, uh, this one acre site out of the total of fourteen acres over there was just a general business encrusted in the middle of the site. They have been using it for R V storage as part of their operations, what they care to do is straighten up some issues, replat the property as a whole, the majority of the property is already zoned as an M V, uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, mobile home, M H, excuse me, uh, site, and so it's taken this one acre and just bringing it into a whole, okay?
Are there any other public comments regarding the requested rezoning?
Where exactly is it, can you just kind of put a?
Terry, do you want to point out that, that?
I kind of.
Yes, yeah, if I walk over here. Of course, this is the majority of the site, Portobello's Road, access on to either right there, this is the Brockton acre right here.
Other storage area.
Okay. Now, other public comments, we'll close the public hearing, Mayor.
Now bring us time to B to consider an approval for. Okay. Thank you, well, seven fifty-six, reopen the meeting, reopen the meeting. So I bring this to item number B to consider approval or disapproval for item B on, uh, item number twelve.
I make a motion we approve the request of Yen Incorporated to rezone from General Business District to M H, Manufactured Housing District, and to combine replat, requested rezoned property described as part of tract four and five, block seventy-two, McCamble, two point oh two four acres to Portobello Village, D B A, Portobello Village, R V Park, Lots one through five, block seventy-two, McCamble, Portobello Village, M H Park, twenty-four acres, the property described part of tract four and five, block seventy-two, McCamble, two point oh two four acres.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Orff.
Got through that one, okay. All first say aye.
Aye.
This will bring us to item number C, a public hearing in order to repair, vacate, or demolish, just cut it.
Uh, Mayor Council, the items before you are, um, uh, requested for demolition, these are all structures, the Little League Department has identified over twenty structures listed as high importance of, uh, items that need to be demolished, uh, they are a public safety hazard to both the fire police and to our community, and these are the five, um, properties we'd like to get started with. Part of the procedure is, uh, Council needs to hold a public hearing on the, on the structures, whether to repair, vacate, or demolish the structure.
Four oh two South Houston belongs to Cherry.
Cherry.
Who, Harrison, uh, it is part of what was remaining of the fire from the hotel. Uh, Twelve Street is Mary Alvarada, also a fire, um, three sixty North Commercial belonging to Olivia Rendell, and also, um.
Top.
This is Seventh Street, Georgia, this is, uh, Alvarada.
That's the other, Almaralos at the bottom, the other one's at the top.
Okay, this is on North Commercial.
That's commercial, yeah.
Three twenty-five North Whitney should be this one, belonging to San Donas, and then Georgia Felicita Alvarada. Um, all the property owners have received notice on the, um, the status of their structures, and, um, Michael's available for any comments. But as you can see, the structures at this point are not habitable, I mean, they're not, not only not habitable, but they are in, um, such repair that if we would have to send first responders, then it would be a, at risk to their lives.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I have, uh, the property on three twenty-five North Whitney, and I have, uh, contracted with, uh, a demolition company to take it down, and they told me it'd take about, uh, a week or so to finish, and he was willing to start right away on it, so I have some paperwork that, uh, he gave me that I could give you as, uh, evidence that I went and visited him today.
What's your name, sir?
Nunes, Jose Nunes.
What's your address for the recognition?
Uh, the address here in Aransas is three twenty-five North Whitney.
That's this address?
It's the, yes, yes, exactly.
Do you have a regular mailing address?
Yes, forty-four thirty-one Monaco Drive, San Antonio, Texas, seven eight two one eight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Do we have anybody else in the audience, owners or ones who may comment regarding the structure, please?
The house on the, on the top right, uh, the, the garage that I had been complaining for the last year, just before the mayor got here, uh, I've been complaining about it, a garage went like this until it fell all the way to the ground, it's across the street from the, the Crossroad Church, uh, that garage is still laying there, and the houses next to it. Yeah, the houses right, uh, next, uh, let's see, would be south of that building there, they had been there, uh, when I was growing up, and they were, should have been demolished in, okay? It, it was straight shotgun place, I was telling one of the city workers, if you want to shoot somebody on the other end, you just go through the front door and you shoot them, hit them on the other side. But the deal is that, uh, all, all that place right there, they got a Texas stand, I can guarantee all that wiring is, is so old-fashioned, you know, it should be in violation, all that stuff should be checked out. If they're gonna demolish something on, on commercial, people go through Commercial Street and keep, keep garbage like that, you know, who wants to live in Aransas Pass?
Absolutely, the, um, our current garbage contract, um, is giving us credit for hauls, and so you're gonna start seeing every other month that these five structures on the demolition list, because we're done trying to give notice to property owners who, for lack of a better term, take it and toss it in the trash, these are not living structures, and that is not what we want to raise as possible.
And of course, some of those people can't move into housing, like the project, which is going very nice now, but they can't go into housing because of their criminal records, you know, and, and, you know, I feel, I feel sorry for them, but I didn't put them in that spot, but that place needs to be cleaned out, you know, you know, we might be able to buy them out, you know, you never know. Thank you.
What'll happen is we will, um, if we don't receive a response, the city will do the demolition and place a lien on the property and eventually acquire them.
This, this Rendon people, Rendon, are, are they from California, right? I believe I talked to them like eighteen years, about ten years ago, they sit there with random, but they're Rendon.
This is, this is part of the first step in moving toward the demolition process, but he's right, there are, there are multitude of, and we've partnered with the Chamber, the Chamber, um, businesses have come forward and will contribute five hundred dollars per structure, we'll allow them to put a sign that says sponsored fire in conjunction with, or, or something like that, to help offset the cost for the demolition itself, because there are a lot to do in this first year.
Is this the one where B F I is assisted?
Yes, tenfold.
He's ready with the answer.
We, we had on record the address of the building, West Monde.
West Monde.
Move.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, maybe it's aligned with this, how, how do we determine which, which building to?
We did a survey, there are, there are over twenty, um, I don't know if you recall, we had a, a development committee, and one of the first things that we talked about was the appearance of, of the corridors, and, um, they gave us a list, and then obviously our code officers, and then our complaints from citizens, and we just started, um, ranking the property on those things that are either one in the major corridors, or two are in such severe disrepair that if we had a wind event or something like that, it's gonna cause damage to other surrounding structures.
Because I know, right next to that one on North Twelve Street, if you go like toward the Housing Authority on the same street, I mean, it's a dead end, there's a trailer there that's been burned down longer than that one has.
That's, um, that's the, is that the one you were trying to say, the story?
We're, we're working through there, she, she continues to say it is a, it is a salvageable structure, but we've reached the end of the line, she may be in the next room.
I think she's been telling us that story since about three city managers ago.
Her criminal activity, have you had any complaints from the city?
Uh, specifically, I don't know, but I have myself a person as being associated with some of these structures and the agents for drug use, we don't use a possibility of , uh, structures, it's dangerous for us to walk into, and I say often, some of those structures, try to clean up the needle that we sort of, uh, it's a, one of the, the.
Sure.
So the property owners were sent notice on April second, um, to come before you and request a, um, you know, a waiver of demolition order, and, um, debate only Mr. Nunes has responded or is here, and that's, that's pretty much classic to the notices we send out for structures for high grass or those kinds of things violation, we don't generally get it good or small.
Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
If, if some of those are in Aransas County, we may be able to help you out, with the equipment to take down, or, uh, disposal.
We can consider that, stretch it out. We can stretch it out that far.
Well, let's not push it. But, but, uh, we're, Aransas County's very active in, in, in doing that sort of thing, so we weren't happy to visit with you or with you mayor, uh, uh, about that, uh, we, we want, uh, Aransas Pass to, to, uh, be a, a great opening to, especially the Aransas County.
I guess, uh, the end of our opening?
Yes, at this point, we'll close the public hearing on, uh, the order to repair, vacate, or demolish, four oh two South Houston Street, nine sixty-four North Twelve Street, three twenty-five North Whitney Street, three thirty North Seven Street, and three sixty North Commercial, all located in Aransas Pass.
Will we start our meeting at eight oh seven? Do I hear a motion for item D?
We want, uh, about one for Mr. Nunes on three twenty-five North Whitney.
Do we need him? Yes, you will exempt that from the motion, you will, you will, um, give Mr. Nunes a stipulated timeframe for demolition, and I would review the documents he has with him and give him that timeframe.
He's already left.
I, I would tell you no more than thirty days.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the order to repair, vacate, or dema, or demolish, uh, number one is four oh two South Houston, number two, nine sixty-four North Twelve Street, uh, number three, giving him, Mr. Nunes, the thirty days on three twenty-five North Whitney, number four, three thirty North Seven Street, uh, number five, three sixty North Commercial Street.
These would be approved in the order for demolition?
Approved the order for demolition.
My second.
All first say aye.
Aye.
Uh, item E, Mayor is, uh, really just restating the city's position and enforcing model subdivision regulations, which are adopted by Aransas County, Oasis County, and San Patricio County, the city is required by state law to enforce model subdivision regulations or ordinances that it has approved that are more stringent, um, we currently have, uh, regulations that are on par with model subdivision, and I've, as I stated before, it's a matter of us enforcing those regulations. Item E one is restating.
May I speak to that?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council and City Manager, I am Jack Chaney, I'm your Aransas County Commissioner in Precinct One and One A, which is One A, uh, I just wanted to reiterate, uh, to the council, we have, uh, a new mayor, and, and, uh, I wanna let you know what Aransas County's, uh, place is in this, uh, we have through interlocal agreements worked, uh, with Aransas Pass and the city of Rockport, Town of Fulton, Independent School District, uh, through the pass, to offer, uh, uh, opportunity to improve your roads and that sort of thing at, uh, a greatly reduced expense. Uh, Aransas County, right now, the current policy is that we will, uh, we will furnish to you at cost, material, labor, equipment, and overhead expen, uh, overhead operating, there are overhead operations, uh, at our cost, not a penny more than our cost. Right now, a new road is running about fifty dollars a, a linear foot, okay, that's considerably less. Now, we're not gonna go in and, and put in new subdivisions or anything like that, but we also, if the subdivisions are in your ETJ, uh, which a lot of the subdivisions that are coming up will be in your ETJ, uh, we require that they put, build it to, uh, county standards, and the county will take that over until y'all move into the, the city. Hadn't had an opportunity to visit with y'all in about four years about that, and I saw this on the agenda, and, and I was asked to, uh, to come and, and speak to that, y'all have a lot of areas that we can help you with, uh, we would like to have sixty-foot right-of-way, uh, we will build, uh, the roads to our standards or greater, uh, we use a chip seal, and we ha, put everything on a five-year rotation, uh, we, uh, come back and, we will not do it, uh, I, we actually have no policy to allow me to say this, but I'm gonna tell you, as your commissioner, I'm not gonna put up with putting in, uh, substandard streets, we, you know, we, we fought with Deberry for years over here, and that was a substandard street, there's a lot of money spent on a substandard street, and whenever you came back and you fixed that, you solved that problem, uh, people say that you can't put a good street in on sugar sand, but you can, uh, it, you gotta go down about that far, but, but you can do it, and once we take.
How far is that?
Yeah, about that far, yeah. Three inches won't do it, no, no. No, but, but I do wanna offer, uh, to, uh, the council, and do wanna bring those of you that, uh, have been on the council for a while, that have participated with us, we're getting ready to go into budget, uh, we'll start our budget, uh, next month, actually, and so with Sylvia not having time last year to get in on this, if y'all have something that's more than just on a normal rotation, we'd like to go ahead and, and get that ahead of time, so David Varell, our, our road engineer, could do it. Now, Aransas County is not like San Patricio County, uh, Jim Price is a road commissioner, I'm not a road commissioner, uh, we have a unit road system, which means we have a professional, reg, registered professional road engineer, and he is in charge of all the roads that are in Aransas County, and he is in charge of the, uh, coming up with interlocals between, uh, the municipalities and, uh, the township and the school districts, and we'll, uh, we'll work with you in any way that we can, uh, we have an excellent drainage program, uh, we have a model, again, the model set of subdivision ordinances, uh, everything, we probably have one of the best drainage programs in the state of Texas, uh, you know, we're, we only have in Aransas County, we only have about sixteen foot of elevation, I think the highest place we have is like twenty-two foot, and I think somebody just built a berm there, but, uh, the, I think the highest structure, um, Sam, you're at what, you're twelve, yeah, you're in nineteen, yeah, so, so, uh, we, we have very, very low, very, very low, and y'all are low, too, but, uh, we found twenty-six different drainage patterns in the county using LiDAR and using G I S, and we have that mapped out, uh, the south end of the county was the number one priority, uh, Ponciana, as a matter of fact, where Sam's at, was our number one priority, and we're just about to get through with that. Uh, so we're here to help you, uh, uh, and whenever you start dealing with subdivision regulations, my road engineer said if he can be of any assistance to you, won't cost you a dime, uh, we'll be glad to help you, and, and not only just in Aransas, uh, uh, County, but, uh, also on the part of Aransas Pass that deals with Aransas County, and, you know, I mean, we figure out how to get it in Deberry, we'll figure it out, but, but anyway, we're here to help you, and I thought this was an opportune time to, to come and visit with you, I've been in, in conversation with, uh, Andy over here about what they, what they. I've been in conversation with Andy over here about what they, what they doing. I think y'all are aware of what is going to go over there. So whatever you're doing on the subdivision ordinances, the model ordinances are excellent, they're excellent. And their argument sometimes is, you know, two acres, five acres, ten acres, what really is the starting point? You've got to have a starting point somewhere. But I can tell you for a fact, between here and the bypass, I have twenty-two miles of roads that should have been installed whenever they sold the property. And there's no utilities, there are no anything like that. And so, you know, you can't just come in and have somebody two thousand foot down the road put utilities into service one mobile home. But you've got to do something and I think everybody is aware of that. And so I'm just here to help in any way I can, thank you.
And he's right, we've entered into an interlocal with Aransas County. Council also approved the water service connection agreement, water sewer, that says if you're going to tie onto city water and sewer, you must meet current building permits. We're having a little bit of resistance from San Patricio County in entering that same kind of agreement, but we'll keep pushing that P up too. Item E one is also restating the city's position of the National Fire Protection Standard, that's the NFPA. That's the part that says the fire trucks have to be able to get to us. That's also one of the available outs. The code doesn't give an exact specification of what the road must be made of, that's within our codes and with the model subdivision rules. The NFPA just says it must be able to bear the weight. So that's one of the codes we can rely on as we enter into development agreements that we'll talk about in the next item. Item F is actually, the, F and G are items that were presented to planning commission last Monday with planning commission recommendations, they are in your packet. The first amendment is, and I don't know how council wants me to attack this, we can either go five and twenty-four or I can give you the overall scope and then go into each item and how it impacts. Go into the overall scope because that's easier, I think, for the audience to understand. One of the first things council told me is, number one, we need to find a way to help these property owners who have been affected, who have purchased property and have to extend water sewer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So in the code, you're going to see a definition of a development agreement that's proposed. And that is to allow council the opportunity to enter into an agreement with the property owner whereby the city would install the necessary utilities, the necessary infrastructure and the property owner would then pay the city back at a defined amount, a set time period plus an interest rate. That interest rate should never be more than half a percent of what the city is paying on interest because the whole plan is not to earn money on the infrastructure because we'll do that later as it's dedicated back and we receive connections. But it's an opportunity for the council to allow some relief, albeit temporary relief, to the property owner. So the amendment to the building code that says building permits on previously platched property that have not completed the necessary improvements to be fully developed, either meeting the municipal code, the model subdivision rules or any combination, will not be allowed until, until the property owner either enters into a development agreement and pays the necessary fees or does the necessary improvements. And that's again, being able to service lots on costs that should be ultimately borne by the property owner. Now, the time period, I didn't specify a time period, that's going to be up to the council. We can, at the next council meeting, give you some guidelines if it's less than ten thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, what, do we spread it out over five years, do we spread it out over ten years? What is that time period for repayments? And again, I explained that allowance of building permits on property that is not adequately served by infrastructure does not do the city any good in orderly development. Amendments to chapter twenty-four and these are specifically, we talked about pro-rata share. We talked about if, for example, to reach any property over there is two thousand or three thousand linear fee. Everybody who taps on to that property should pay their fair share. And so the definition of pro-rata and what that particularly means to development is included here. You should pay your fair share front of abutting that sewer line, water line or street line. That's pretty much a national standard. The definitions in this chapter, we're replacing the city health officer with a building official. We don't have a health officer, we rely on the county's health department. So this would be a partnership relationship between the building official and the county health department. The big ticket item here is reasonable distance. The code defines, the code says if you're reasonably within a distance to tie on to water sewer. We've looked at surrounding jurisdictions, one mile seems to be the norm. I've talked to several of you and I've given you alternatives to that one mile that is based on distance or based on the number of lots. And what we came back with was subdivisions of two units or less define reasonable as a quarter mile. And I'll go back to McClung, we have lots on McClung that have a beautiful street in front of them that is served by septic system. When septic, when sewer system is available one block over and they didn't extend and were required to extend. So that doesn't do anything for our water sewer fund as we try to make improvements and it certainly doesn't do anything for those property owners who are much further out. Subdivisions of less than twenty units define reasonable as half a mile. I think that's more than reasonable for the rate of return subdividing into twenty units, you're going to liquidate that money right back as you subdivide and sell those properties. And then all other subdivisions, twenty units or above, maintain that reasonable distance as one mile. That's pretty much the standard and again, it's a cost that's passed on to lot sizes.
What happens if you have a lot and you're not going to build but one home?
Well, the problem with that is we always have to look at the zoning first. Zoning is ethereal and it follows the property. So if I have a five acre track and I cannot, I cannot lock the zoning.
Sure.
So if I have a five acre track that is zoned R seven eight, comp planning, future planning wise, I need to plan for the highest and most intense use for that property. That lot would probably be able to serve at least twenty units if I think a minimum four units per acre on an R seven eight. So four units an acre times five acres is twenty units. I must serve that property for something that can serve twenty units. I can't legally restrict the lot on the platting and the zoning if you go in and change that one lot to something that is.
No, I understand.
So as we talk about those things, while it may be one home this plan today, we have no mechanism to prevent that from being subdivided, we know.
Sure.
Absolutely not. Going back to the definitions, also in chapter twenty-four, is the minimum lot size for septic as being one acre. And this is for those five acre tracks that aren't necessarily near sewer. That's a way to control density, but again, if they're willing to extend, then we're back up to the twenty unit mark.
Right.
Reimbursements by the city, there are sprinkles throughout the code that say we're going to pay at an eight percent annual interest rate. That's a lot better than the banks are doing right now.
Lot there.
And so the definition would be changed to an annual interest rate equal to the current prevailing market rate. Right now, the city's earning point seven five on our millions that are in accounts. So we should never be paying eight percent if we're earning point seven five.
Makes sense.
Makes sense. And here's the definition of development agreement. Agreement recommended, it would go before the planning commission and planning commission would recommend it to council. And it would specify timeframes, standards of construction. For example, if it's the county standard, we're going to meet, that agreement gives you the leeway to determine what classification of road system you want to call something if it falls in line with our comp plan, just a variety of ways to work the standards in. Also timelines for repayments, if we're going to participate in any of the off-site improvements. In other words, if any needs a six inch line to serve him, but the city would be better served if it was an eight or a ten inch line, participating in the difference to that cost, all of those things within that particular definition. Chapter twenty-four is replacing Brennan's annotated civil statutes with our more current legal reference of the local development code. Chapter twenty-four twelve, designing standards for parks and playgrounds. I don't know if you're aware, but developers who build in the city are required to dedicate parkland for parks. And if we don't, they'll give us money and if we don't use it within eighteen months, we owe them eight percent. So this is also amending that interest rate requirement. And then also discussing the need is, is a parkland really what we want in some areas? Often it should be monies paid in lieu of that can be put into community park or any one of the existing parks. It gets very difficult to maintain small pocket parks. Chapter twenty-four, twenty-four twenty, this one is also a hot button. Issuance of city permits for unplatted property in developed areas. The current ordinance says they've got to put in everything anyway, they've got to put in the necessary streets and access to water and sewer. So there really is no need for the platting exemption. Council also approved the minor plat language a few months ago, allowing me the authority to sign minor plats if there was no extension of utilities or things required or no other burdens on the system. So there's really no need for the exemption from the plat because as you can see, it talks about a six dollar fee and then the city actually preparing the plat as possible and et cetera, et cetera. So it's got to be a dedicated public street and so all of the other requirements are still in place, so there's really no need for the exemption. Water and sewer line extension, again, the definition of reasonable is going to apply through this section. So the number of units, whether it's quarter acre, half acre, quarter mile, half mile or one mile distance requirements. And then the change to the one acre minimum lot size for septic systems. Lastly, on the street section, we do have those areas of town that do have drainage issues and the subdivider may not want to put in the sidewalk and underground drainage, they may want to continue with the bargages, especially in those areas where the lots are larger and you're going to have the one acre tracks to keep sort of that country open field. Requiring the need for ribbon curb, which is this concrete stabilization along the side pavement, which keeps the pavement from deteriorating at a faster rate. And it gives just a more clean and polished look to the road section. In that same section, underwater lines, strike, the two inch stubs may be extended to serve a maximum of three lots. Model subdivision rules don't even allow two inch water lines to be extended. And then we need to add the language where water supply is not reasonably available. We need to say where it's reasonably available, they need to extend and then they shouldn't be smaller than six or four inches in length. And again, that just goes, it matches what the model subdivision requirements are. Item B, in areas where public water supply is not reasonably available, except for other shafts and strip wells and in such a manner, I would recommend to council that we leave that language there, but the reasonable distance has to be within that quarter acre half, you know, quarter mile, half mile, et cetera, et cetera. And again, discussion of the pro-rata share. So the alternatives I've given you is leave the current ordinance as it stands. Make the changes with the reasonably available distance requirements and then implementing the timeframes for the development agreement. The consideration on the staff part is, there's a financial impacts portion. Staff's going to have to keep track of those things that have pro-rata share, that's going to be required to be paid by whoever buys the property next to it. We're going to have to keep track of those repayment plans, we're going to have to keep track of the interest rate and when those monies are due again. And the code today gives authorization for the person to ask for a refund of fees. Parks requirement is eighteen months. I would ask council to revisit that timeline to a manner closer to ten years, between five to ten years. If a person, for example, and I'll use Andy as an example, wants to put in septic, the development agreement should say you must pay your tap fee today, in today's dollars, money's worth more today than it is in the future. And if in seven years, ten years, whatever timeframe the council decides, we haven't reached you, then you're eligible for that money plus the interest that money accrued back as a refund. I wouldn't want those timelines to be small because obviously that fund's going to take a while to build on itself and it is exactly for water sewer improvements, it is exactly to reach those lines. And as monies are deposited, that fund grows and we're able to make those necessary improvements.
I have a question on that, for instance, if we go ten years and the property is sold, what happens?
It follows the property.
It follows the property, not the owner, okay.
They will be able to make payments on that?
That's, that will be on the development agreement. We will, we'll develop some guidelines with council's direction. We'll present it to planning commission for a recommendation and then it's ultimately approved by council. Whether that time period is too long, too short, you guys want to adjust it, that's all workable on the floor.
Another question, like for instance, if, whose responsibility is it to claim, somebody's building up next door, they're going to tap it?
That's what I'm saying, that's going to be our responsibility.
Okay, all right.
It's the city's responsibility. And we'll have to do that with things filed at the courthouse, with documents filed that say we have a pro-rata share that's due. We had a big problem and we're just keeping track of that because some of those plats are in the thirties and forties and it was a note recorded on the plat. Well, every time a property was subdivided to go back into the plat, historicals is a chore. So the assumption from the early eighties was made that, oh, pro-rata is due, pro-rata is due and was it due, I don't know, maybe somebody paid it. So there are some onuses to staff and to the city on moving toward development agreement or pro-rata share. But at the end of the day, it's probably the most fair and equitable. Nobody's going to get out from not having to pay something, it's a matter of what does it cost? If the city does it, obviously it's less expensive, but the cost and the timeframe and the interest to pay it out over a period of time.
Because I know that's critical to keeping track of when to pay back, because I know we had an experience where we, I mean, I'm saying Church Igoe too, they paid everything to go out, promised by the city, as people tapped in, we would get funds.
And you haven't?
Never. Never have. So that's what I'm just wondering, it's good if we're going to make that appointment, it's going to be.
They have to be recorded documents. It's, I understand, because I faced it over there, it's very difficult when there isn't a recorded document and it's simply a note on a plat, on a plat document.
Can we go back and collect that eight percent?
Well, that was in the code up until, hopefully, until tonight.
It's been years, 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 years.
I think I missed one, building inspector changed that to building official. And so that's, those are the proposed amendments to chapter five and chapter twenty-four that the planning commission has previously.
My name's Andy Hancock, I'm the owner of fourteen sixty West Young, that's who keeps being referred to as Andy, that's me over there. In case, I've never been here before, so nobody knows me.
Did I just make the round, Andy?
That's right, yeah, well, that's right, I, yeah, I build sandcastles for a living, so it's, I'm in the right place. So stacking a bit of sand on a road isn't a problem, so we're good. I just want to clarify one of the points you just made. I have bought a five acre tract, I haven't bought it to develop it, I've bought it to live on it. But it's, in my understanding, did you just say that it then becomes something that would be a twenty unit lot?
It has the possibility.
It has the possibility of becoming that.
Right.
So like if you sold it, someone could come back and.
And replat it into twenty lots, right. So as part of the, my question about your development agreement is can I sign the development agreement as a single family homeowner or builder? Because if I, if I'm classed as a twenty unit development, even though it's only for me, that will then force me down a road of having to pay my pro-rata share of up to a mile of water and sewer, which is a vast amount of money and that would cause me financial hardship, I know. And also, all the other services, the road, I mean, the road isn't such a big problem, it's about six hundred feet. But the water and sewer, there is no sewer in West Young, but there is water, but it's about, we measured about three tenths of a mile at the moment. But if I'm forced into connecting to water and sewer at a mile, to pay my pro-rata share of a mile's worth of pipe is a lot of money. So that would cause me financial hardship. So how can the development agreement, before you decide to amend this, be tailored for single homeowners like me? Now, I appreciate the fact that I've already had a word with the county commissioner about this, what happens when you die? Well, my wife gets it, what happens when my wife dies? Well, the kids get it, what happens when the kids die? You know, we're back here collecting for forty, fifty years. Um, we, we don't intend to, to run it like that, but I would suggest that the, that the development agreement would maintain that it reverts to the twenty unit status upon its sale to a third party. Now, I don't know why that can, if, if these are legal documents, which is great, I'm up for signing one of those. Why can't it be written that it reverts to the previous subdivision law upon sale to a, another party other than the family? Because it would put an onerous, uh, death if suddenly my children assumed it and it was twenty lots or whatever it was. But I don't, I don't see why if I'm building one home, which, which is why I bought it, I tend to build one home, that I, that I should be considered a twenty unit lot. And I would be prepared to sign my development agreement based upon the fact that I was building one house and not twenty plat, uh, twenty homes or whatever. So I, it seems that I could be forced into quite a lot of financial burden because of the way that it's written, being a twenty unit lot, because it's five acres.
And we're just talking about pipe size on the water line and sewer line, right?
Yeah, I think you could craft the development agreement. The problem with, uh, people like Andy is we're going to end up with, he's going to pay his fair share on one unit, basically. And then pro rata is due on nineteen units later on, or however many of that subdivision divides into. And again, the onus is going to be on us, which is a big onus, on the maps and things to say, out of twenty potential units, only one has been paid.
Right.
And so whoever buys it behind Andy owes nineteen units. And whoever buys it after that owes nineteen units. And so it's a cost burden that's going to be transferred to property owner, to property owner, to property owner. Because there is no legal way for us to restrict how many we can subdivide it into if the zoning is in place. We can go through a mass rezoning and say, the whole city is zoned ag and you can only build one unit per acre, but.
But, but the other thing is if you were, if I do it as a single family home plot and sign that development agreement and at a later date, I, I sold that and somebody decided to do it, they'd have to replat it, wouldn't they, into twenty separate units?
Yeah, or, or however many, so.
But they'd have to apply to the city to do that.
Yeah, well, for example, if, if, um, we determine extending water sewer and everything to you is a hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And potential twenty units divided by a hundred thousand dollars.
Hmm.
Five thousand dollars per lot, the potential.
Hmm.
If whoever buys it from you, and, and so your part today would be five thousand.
Hmm.
If whoever buys it from you doesn't divide it into twenty, ninety-five thousand dollars is still due. If then we divide it into two units, ninety-five thousand dollars is still due. There's no way out from paying the fair share, it's just how.
But that's because the twenty unit is dictating, we did, we, we actually connected a mile. So you, 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 when you, when you give the twenty unit block, you then, you then instantly extend the cost to a mile, rather than quarter of a mile. So you're artificially extending the cost because you're assuming that it may be a twenty unit development. Now, when I come to sell that property, I mean, there could be something written on the deed that says, uh, if you replat this property, this is what you're going to be liable for. Because, because of the document, if your development agreement and these, and the legal agreement surrounding it between me and the council is on that deed, which it will be, because it has to be recorded, um, there doesn't seem to be any, uh, I can't see why we can't write it in a, in a manner now that suits single family home builders, but would also get your tax money and your connection money when we sold it.
I know, Andy, that's what I'm saying, your part today would be if you.
Mm-hmm, mm. I, I understand the break, the breakdown, but it's also, the, the problem is it forces the issue to a distance. Because at the moment, it's only quarter of a mile, there's no sewer, so I, I put a septic in, which bears no burden. It doesn't put anything to the tax base of the water and sewer, which we discussed before, and I appreciate that. You try to build the city and build the funds. Um, but if the sewer line doesn't exist and the cost at the moment is onerous to the city, is, is, is a lot to the city, um, isn't it better in this transition period to, to let individual homeowners put well and septic in? Uh, wha- whatever they haven't got, put that in, to take the burden off the city financially for putting the services in. And when the city's in, in the right position and, and the lines do go in, you say, right, well, now you've got to connect as part of the development agreement.
The city's never going to be in a proper position by continuing to allow well and septic. It, it will never be, because that is one of the financial engines, you, you heard bond, council.
Oh, of, of course, yes, I, yeah, 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 the, the bond is very important, yeah.
That money is an engine that drives itself. Now, the development agreement, I mean, council also needs to understand, ninety-five thousand dollars today, the agreement that we reached today, in twenty years, ninety-five thousand dollars may not even pay for that line. So we have the time value of money that we're also talking about. Not to be a punishment for Andy or developers like him, but the fact of the matter is, if we go down that path, then there is a, um, there's a zoning consequence, a density consequence that has to be thought of, whether we go to downzone all of those properties within that area to only allow specific. That doesn't get us anywhere at a later date when they go to rezon it and they still owe whatever amount of money it was that we used to install.
But, but from a, from a, uh, an economic development point of view and from a, um, a city point of view, I mean, cities are built by people, not by buildings or roads or sewers or whatever. But, uh, if that line was put all the way and the road was paved all the way to the highway, that all that property would sell. It would become desirable, the prices would go up, people would come in and build bigger homes because they're having to pay more for the lots. And you would avoid the mobile problem, um, not that mobiles are a problem, I've lived in a mobile. And, uh, that you would avoid, you get bigger properties built, pay more taxes. I know the taxes don't pay for the services, you know, it never catches up. But the economic impact and the possible business impact, um, and the, and the economic development impact of those new homes that went all the way to the highway would be significant. And the, one of the reasons I, I chose to come and live in Aransas Pass, or I will live in Aransas Pass, uh, because I like trees. I like that secluded, I like the wooded lots, I like the area, you know, it's, uh, I don't, I don't see a lot of the problems other people see because I haven't lived here, but I've lived in places that, uh, that have, have their problems. And I don't see Aransas Pass as having a problem, uh, except when I came to have a sandy road, but anyway. But, uh, I, I think the economic development from extending the water and sewer and the road all the way to the highway would generate far more, a far more plus for the city than it would worrying about the cost initially. I know there's always a cost, I mean, you're trying to get nine and a half million dollars worth of bond going. So, but for me, I've seen economic development happen. When people move into an area, things happen. When areas don't, don't develop, nothing happens, and that's what we're seeing at the moment, so. Um, and I know from the, from the economic development side as well, times are tough. You know, people haven't got the money to spend, but this is an area that's actually growing, uh, with your LNG port and the big factories that are going to come here. It's, times are good, going to be good in Port Aransas, uh, Aransas Pass, I mean, so it's, it's great. So that's why I want to come and live here, so. So I, I, I just want the council to consider that first, because it's just the amount of cost that's extended by making that a twenty unit lot. And I think a development agreement should reflect the fact that I just want to build one house. Um, and other people may want to build one house, but I agree, your, your cost analysis is fine. But if it's, if it's only one house as well and it stays like that, it hasn't got that drain on the, on the city. Even though you might have to put an eight inch line for all the other houses that are going down there. But, uh, it hasn't got that drain on resources and I'm still paying my share, so. We're talking about an area that's not developed at all at the moment, so it's, it's a toughie. I know, you know, Sylvia's got my vote, she, it's, she's in a tough spot, so, and you guys are trying to develop a city, so. But that's just, I just wanted to clarify that point about twenty units, I was confused, so. Okay, thank you.
So what do we do, Toby?
I mean.
In his case?
As, the development agreement would reflect, the needs only due for the, the part, you know, the one unit or whatever and whatever the, the pro rata share is for that frontage. The, the problem is, is the cost is going to be passed on, it's going to be passed on to.
To assess, uh, like assessments, the same as a street or what?
Well, I'm talking about the, the cost of development, the total cost of development. So, um, if he enters into the development agreement and pays, you know, his one unit per cost, which we'll have to really look at the definition of pro rata now, because now we're talking per unit as opposed to a tighter linear frontage. Without the ability to restrict how many units can go on a piece of property without changing the rezoning, other than the septic requirement, the minimum of, you know, one acre. And so if he has a five acre lot, then, you know, we assess it on a five acre ability. But again, uh, there's no control, the zoning, zoning governs. And so that's why we can't even entertain a plat if it, if the zoning isn't already in place. So, you know, we're all in a tough spot. I don't have an answer for him other than as things become more desirable, the density sure wants to go up because I want to be able to put more there, right? Because everybody, it's a prime spot to be, highway access, those kinds of things. I would hate for us to enter into a decision today that's going to negatively impact us in the long term. And we're just pushing off a problem today onto future councils and, and future residents. The fact remains, the cost of development is typically borne by the property owner and slash developer. I, I don't have a better answer than that, I wish I did. There's city participation and I think by allowing our own labor force to do that, which takes them off the streets and maintenance of other areas of town that need attention, is something we're already giving up. There's a cost benefit to having them build a street at that particular point in time and having them maintain what's on Myrtle or what's on, you know, some areas of town, so. You know, as I'm looking at it from a fifty thousand foot level, and there's eighty-two hundred people, eleven thousand people ETJ that all want a service of some sort, some capacity. And by allocating resources to a particular area for a particular development, takes away from that.
Yeah, but are we talking water?
Water should always be required, I mean, that's.
I mean, I, I know, I've been here since seventy-nine and Young still has the same amount of water it has since then.
Yeah. Water, water's one of the easier things. I mean, you go, you go a stretch you could have out, you go a stretch you could have out. That, that's probably one of the easier things to install. Sewer's an entirely different issue.
Sure, absolutely.
Calculations and it's an entirely different issue. I, I wish I had a better answer for you on, on his response. I mean, if we do it on the septic system, if he's going to be allowed to tie onto septic and the minimum requirement is now a one acre lot, then his maximum density would be a five acre lot. Okay? And the development agreement would be structured that he pay on a five acre maximum lot basis, which still puts in a half a mile as opposed to a mile. It just, that hundred thousand dollar cost is now a fifty thousand dollar cost divided by five units. We, we've reduced the cost, but there's still a cost.
The, the other thing that's, uh, you said that West Young is, we, we know it's got water halfway down, but it hasn't got sewer. How, how are the other, um, if we put sewer all the way down the street, how does it impact the other owners on the street? Do they have to pay a share as well?
Yep.
The ones that have already got well and septic?
Pro rata share.
Oh.
The development agreement would say you must come on after a certain period of time. And then once the, once the restriction, or once the amendments are, are done, then no future septic will be allowed within lots that don't need that minimum.
No, this is for new bill, what about the existing owners on West Young?
Oh, they, they could remain on their septic until such time as they need to replace their septic and then at which point they're not going to be allowed to do that.
They've probably been on their septic long enough that they're waiting for sewer.
Hmm, right, okay, oh, I see, so we, you wait on the left, left span of the, the. Right, I'm just wondering how you're going to collect from the other owners on, on West Young that have already developed for the, whatever it is, eight tenths of a mile that's already built, so, okay?
My country history, on this particular situation, would it be easier just to put the street, then put a, a septic system and maybe get it filled with water like you said?
And, and he'll be allowed under these regulations to put a septic? Um, water is, water is within?
Within a mile.
Yeah. What's your address?
Fourteen sixty West Young. On the course of.
Okay.
So if you move down that, that rectangular building, it's because it's on the left hand bottom corner of my property, the rectangular building in the, this one.
Here.
That's the left hand bottom edge, it extends upwards from that.
And so.
Three twenty-five by six forty.
Within that reasonable distance, um, if we go to the one mile or the half mile requirement, he'd, he'd have to extend water. And again, water's much easier than sewer. And he's on more than one acre, so he'd be allowed to install septic. And we'd have to look at street construction, getting to him from whatever's the closest manner possible.
Uh, there is a young lady who's recently put a building in across the street, fourteen eleven, West Young. Um, and I, I finally met her today, I've, I've been trying to track her down, but I finally met her and she's, she's, uh, the, the, as to the road construction, um, I would, I would like it to, uh, uh, obviously accommodate the seventy-five thousand pound fire engine, which is cool, because I like fire engines. Um, uh, but the, uh, and, and constructed with county standards, obviously eight inch grade. Um, but I would like it to be initially stone while the development is going on, while we finish our developments. And then, and then look at, look at, um, putting the asphalt coating on it. Because I think the gentleman opposite me who owns three lots, uh, would be very happy to pay his share because his property value's going to go up, because he's right opposite me, so, I mean, it's, it's a win-win, I think. And I s- I think one of the things this is going to do is going to help development for all these people. And they're going to say, wow, if we enter into one of these development agreements with the city, we can get things done, we can buy land and we can build houses, and I think that'll add to your eighty-two hundred, um, uh, taxable base. And I think we'll get it up, you know? We should have a big thermometer outside city hall with a number of people, ten thousand, twenty thousand.
And, and that's, that's not really a bad idea, because inevitably what happens is you put in a road and then another development comes and destroy the road. Because they're coming in with the cement trucks and everything else, back and forth, back and forth. On a newly built road, for all intents and purposes, is a structurally cured, whatever you want to call it. I've just, I've seen it time and time again. It's not a bad idea to leave an eight inch base, a compacted base that can wear, you know, bear the weight until such point as development is whatever percentage complete, whatever that is, to come back with the overlay. And again, that's why we restate the NFPA standard, because it doesn't say what it needs to be made of. That's within our own code, so that's going to give you leeway in the development agreement. The fact of the matter is we can't leave with a sandbaggy.
So if, if we just approve this, what's on here tonight, we could always go back and he could be a different case for this.
And the development agreement is completely.
Sure, we can change whatever we.
It's going to be.
This will be from this day forward on every other person that decides.
Yes.
And the dozen that's out there right now that's been up here last.
There's, uh, I have five drawn on my map. If y'all have more, please send them up with. Um, and they're all within the general vicinity, there's a lot of property that's been sold in his area. We have the one on Solder, we have the one on, um, Freewood thirteen, we have the one on McLone. And, and McLone's a little bit different because it's a beautiful street and it's an improved street and it's on septic. There is no reason on God's green earth, again, why we didn't require septic to be, I mean, um, they're, they're the next block over, for goodness sake, why it wasn't required to, to be extended out. Those are all, you know, seventy lots on water sewer fund that aren't, um, aren't paying in.
One of the things in that area that you may want to keep in mind is that is a major drainage area. You can tell, you can tell by this area right here.
All the major drains down.
And then this is, you know, this is a, this is a wall. And, uh, that whole area, uh, I know from Moore, that, uh, six years ago, I guess we had a huge rain and there was massive paint there between Moore and where the next street is over.
Young.
And, uh, that whole area was over the road. And it's over the road for several days and it was, that bank was full for almost a year.
Yeah, which is, you know, the, the other thing is, like Commissioner Cheney mentioned, there are good drainage. I mean, they have initiatives, save little blade, those kinds of things. Septic is not necessarily what you want to allow in your areas that have the potential to be densely populated. The environmental impact to the surrounding areas in flood events and drainage events like that, it could be catastrophic. Especially with the older septic system.
These would just be like, like on his case and several others, this would be a temporary measure.
Yes, the development agreement would be like.
As they develop, they, and once we as a city get to their area, they have to.
They must have one. And, and all of those things will be worked out within, within the agreement itself.
Okay.
I just don't have a mechanism right now to enter into anything, because there's not even a definition of it in the code, so.
Okay, to move forward, what we need to do is the, uh, the, the one.
We just need to approve these?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. I mean, that, that's, that's my recommendation, obviously, um.
Do you something to go off this, bro?
We, we still have to come to terms with the, the density potential for the five acre tracts.
But that's something that you can discuss with each?
Yeah, come up on us, right?
What I'll do at the next council meeting is I, I will give council some draft development agreements that have some language in it. If you feel more comfortable tabling this until you see those agreements, that's okay too. The problem is, we have several developments who are waiting, who want to brace the ground.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, which one's yours? It's make a motion to E, F and G. Just F, G?
F and G.
We don't have to do anything with the, okay.
Yeah.
To approve the amendments to chapter five of the City of Aransson's past municipal code, buildings and construction, and amendments to chapter twenty-four of the City of Aransson's past municipal code, and subdivisions.
Take the motion.
On the first hour?
Aye.
Aye.
So next, next council meeting, we will, we will come with development agreements. The, the other option to the property owner is also gonna be a down zoning. I know, I know our city attorney really dislikes what you call swap zoning, but I keep telling you guys, national planning standards are ranges of residential, ranges of commercial, to encourage what Lauren was here talking about, their housing. So if they want to go for a rezoning, a down zoning, that meets the density requirement, so he's only assessed whatever amount, then that's also something we're gonna have to talk about. Maybe that's a way to get him through and get these developers through the, the potential number of...
Let's go to item number thirteen, so...
We did the nonprofit survey for city contributions. We have eight nonprofits who are ready to submit for city contribution and they range from one thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars, nothing... There's no concrete plans requesting contribution, there's no concrete plans saying they need funding to continue operations or anything like that. This was just, we asked, we would ask the city for money and they came forward. I haven't had anybody knocking down the door that says our doors are gonna close if this doesn't fund.
Johnny's here to give some engineering updates. The Park and Recreation Council asked us to look into, we do not currently ask for insurance when they are leasing out the park, so we're amending our documents. Civic Center uses a, a third-party site. It's a website. You can get basically one day liability...
Event insurance.
Yeah, event insurance at a minimal rate, so we're gonna be pushing everybody toward that site, so we're sort of out of the insurance business. We are gonna be the guest speaker at the Chamber Luncheon on April twenty-fourth, talking about development standards to the real estate community. We also have a town hall meeting set for April twenty-ninth at the Civic Center.
What time?
Six to eight thirty, six to seven thirty. And it's really an opportunity for the community to come out and...
Tell us what we still need to be doing in terms of city departments, city services, those kinds of things.
We have a department, Johnny, do you wanna give an engineer an update or do you wanna wait till the department updates?
Department.
Okay. So we have one, two, we have five departments who are here to give an update and we'll start with Mr. Jeff Martin with IT.
You're gonna like this. And you guys, some of the bond money has IT infrastructure needs. It's gonna give you guys specific information.
Is that why he's smiling?
Yes.
I'm smiling, 'cause I'm a happy guy. So in case you don't know, I mean, you guys know who I am, but we take care of Civic Center, Senior Center, Library, Aquatic Center, Public Works, PD and Fire. You wanna... This young man right here, his name is David Alfalter. He is a dispatch supervisor. I, I guess I showed up here about two years ago and started looking for, looking for help instantly. We have a hundred and five workstations, sixteen physical servers, fourteen virtual servers. And we probably go through about ten work tickets a day, which is not our standard job. It's, it's the, the tasks that we do just to keep the place running. It's, hey, something's broke, how do I...
Come visit me, because my friend is...
That kinda thing, yeah. So, so what we have here, I'm gonna step away from this. One of the things we're doing, trying to do is come up with a new system to track our work orders. And this gives you a breakdown of, you know, work orders, work department, things like that, so that we can get an idea of where we need to focus our attention, things like that. So that's our work order system. It's brand new. We've probably been doing it for about two weeks now. It's really cool. There's an app.
It's all about performance, but how, how do we measure, how do we tell council, we're doing our job? How do we tell the public we're doing best and wisely? And if we see they're getting involved, how do we dress up?
A lot of it's training, you know, trying to get, training into the right, into the right people. Recent accomplishments, server replacements, a lot of machine upgrades, network infrastructure upgrades. We finally got VPN, virtual private network, out to Public Works, so they're connected to us, but it's a little slow. We have a fix for that eventually.
I, I don't think council's aware that our aquatic, a lot of our city facilities are not connected to our city system. So it's very difficult if I ask the director of Public Works to go check his budget, because he doesn't have access to his system.
Yeah, he actually has to go, he actually has to come to City Hall, sit down at that computer or one of the open free computers. And, oh, I didn't count that computer. Sorry. Hundred and six computers. And he has to sit there and log in and do his work here. Well, about two weeks ago, I got them set back up to where they're, they're virtually connected to us, so they can connect to the city here, but it's painfully slow. What would take about two minutes here, takes about ten minutes there, just one, like click of the button. So it's, it's pretty rough. We have a fix for that in the works. It's part of the bond thing. It's why I'm smiling. So future stuff, projects that we're working on, this work order system, we're really kinda just scratching the surface on it right now. This tool is, is, is called Spice Works and it's, it's more than just a work order system. And I'm sorry, I know this is probably boring to everybody in here but me and David, but...
But what this thing does is it's incredible and it's, and it's free.
Free as in freedom and free as in money. It's an open source project. A bunch of geeky dudes like me contribute the code for free, because it's a tool that we all use. And we got tired of paying Microsoft and other guys like that a crazy amount of money. So guys like me and David and other people who know how to program, put it all together. I haven't actually contributed code to it, but I yell and scream a lot about it when, when things are broken. But what it does is it actually will allow you to manage the entire city network. You can walk in here, if you have the codes, connect to the wifi with your, with your phone. And I would instantly see it in my office that somebody connected to our network that's not supposed to be here. So it provides a level of security. Yeah, all kinds of, all kinds of opportunities there. You can see down in the lower right, it's, I know it's real small, but the printer in, in the room across the way over here is running low on toner. And it just automatically tells me, hey Jeff, you got ten percent toner left in there, you're gonna have to make an order, get some toner on the way, that kinds of things. It's, it allows us to be proactive. It allows us to, to be a little bit more, use our time a little bit more wisely. Instead of reacting, we get to be proactive. So this tool is a big part of, of the direction that we're going. Right now, David is... David is, is one of the, the brilliant minds that I identified when I showed up here. He was, he was a dispatch supervisor and, and he demonstrated an aptitude to learn and wanna be involved. And thankfully Eric recognized that as well and, and has allowed me to start mentoring, tutoring, and he's an IT guy now, you know? I mean, he's, he's, he's a big part of, of... I also hired an intern, that's three now that we have. We have a social media intern who handles all the Facebook and Instagram and Twitter and all that stuff. We have a GIS intern, who, she's not here, but... No, I mean, I'm sorry, the lady that, that was, that was talking about GIS earlier, that's Margarita. Miss, I forgot her name, but the lady that was talking about all the GIS plans that were going on, Spencer. That, that's the kinda stuff that, that Margarita's working on, to try to get all of the water in streets and stuff. And that's also on our big project list. I'll get back to my notes. I know. You know, things that we're moving forward, we're trying to, to get fiber internet down to, don't give a IT iPhone, I mean, a microphone. We're, we're, we're trying to get fiber down to Con Brown Harbor.
How hard is that gonna be?
Oh my gosh.
No, it's not hard. It's not hard. The funny thing is, when I got here, they, the cable provider, the internet provider expected the city to pay for it and that's crazy in development. Don't do that. They're, they're gonna earn the money off of it, so we're, we're negotiating things. Yes, it is, it's coming, yes.
It's, it's coming and it's, and it's, it's gonna actually, I'm hoping that it's gonna help push, push business down there just a little bit. But that's, that's a quick frantic update of what's going on. You guys have any questions about any of that?
This work order system is like knocking out of the park. We, we currently have iWorks right now, but I'll tell you what happens with iWorks. Public Works is on iWorks and I had a planning commissioner the other day tell me about some debris on Rife. And so as efficient as they are, you send a text message to Amanda, get with Public Works on Rife. Next day, Public Works is picking up Rife. Well, building inspection had already cited the property on Rife and she was going to pick it up that day, so we beat her to it. And so how do you cite her? How do you recollect money when it was our own? We, we're not talking to each other. So a system like this, it's free and, and able to be connected from anywhere, they can go in and see there's already a work order for Rife on the code enforcement side, leave it until, or make a note to follow up. So it's just a way for us to talk to each other better, be more efficient, because although we talk on Tuesday mornings, trust me, there's a lot to cover.
There, there's still a long way to go on the implementation part of this, but it's baby steps and we keep adding. We're trying to get the, the PD part to, to connect. So this is, there's a tremendous opportunity here and, and me and David are spending a lot of time working on that, so. Thank you.
Civic Center.
I'm gonna be super fast and I've just scratched half of it off. Y'all are lucky. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just, this is just a quick update. At the Civic Center, as of January one of two thousand fourteen, we posted thirty-two events. Just an overview of the events. We've had five trade shows. These five events have all had over a thousand people in attendance. It's gonna be like your gun show, arts and craft show, the craft convention. These generally are from other areas. They travel here with the show. The attendance is normally local or from surrounding towns. We've had four local nonprofit fundraising dinners. These events are open to the public and average about three hundred local people in attendance. Sometimes it's the same people, but just a different, you know, thing. But that's okay. It's all fundraising. It's good. We've had seven private events. That's gonna be your wedding, baby shower, retirement dinner, birthday party. And the average attendance on that is gonna be one fifty. The, the attendance varies depending on just the event. We've had two church religious events, a concert and a memorial service with over two hundred fifty in attendance. And then we've also had fourteen corporate events. That's gonna be, um, corporate events. These are training events that average a little bit lower, forty people in attendance, but they rent our space during the week when it's not really, really in high demand. And they're generally very low maintenance clients, which everyone kinda likes that, you know? It's just kinda, I mean, I don't say easy money, 'cause I'm not discounting that, but it generally sometimes is. We've had two school events. They've done some testing days with us and they will hold their graduation and their sports banquet with us this year. We are coming into our busiest season, so that's good. A little bit about our budget report. As of the end of March, we should be, we're fifty percent into our fiscal year, so we're six months in. All of our benchmarks should be at fifty percent. Our revenues are just about fifty percent for the year and our expenditures are a little bit lower than that, which is good. They're at about forty percent. I don't, I see us finishing our budget, you know? Our projected budget, you know, it should fall right into place. Building maintenance, we're up to date on all our annual inspections. Most all equipment is in good shape and working order. Building maintenance is done just kind of on an as-needed basis and we just kinda do what we can do and we, it's all up to date right now, so that's a good thing. Just kinda looking ahead for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, there's not really any, you know, when we start to prepare for the budget, just some things to put in your mind, so there's no surprises. As the building gets older, we need to reinvest in it. The carpet is something that, I mean, I'm sure y'all have been there. We steam clean it. We have a steam cleaner. We get people to come in and steam clean it, but we need to probably address that in the next fiscal year, either re, replacing the carpet or exploring other options. So hopefully we can come up with something before then. Also, if business continues to increase and we can stay consistent with our bookings that we're doing right now, we're probably gonna need another person or part-time labor. We have three full-time employees right now, but, you know, with three of it sometimes in a weekend and we're turning around the place on a Saturday and even on Sunday, it just gets difficult on me and my staff to accommodate those hours. So, and another thing for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen is probably storage. We just don't have enough storage space. We have a lot of stuff. You know, when we run out the whole facility, we don't have anywhere to put a lot of our stuff. So we, and we also spend a lot of time moving things from room to room, which causes just wear and tear on the material, you know, our inventory for sure. And then, you know, things are gonna depreciate, 'cause we have a lot of chairs over there stored behind here in that white storage building. It's not climate controlled. So that's just something to look into in the future. Community feedback. I get a lot of positive feedback. People are always really happy to let you know what you're doing right or what the city's doing right. I think that, one of the main things I hear is that, you know, that because our policies have changed when the city started, you know, running the facility, that it's just been more flexible and we've seen an increase in bookings. I've just heard that, you know, that the Civic Center is just a little more affordable, it's more rentable, it's more community-based. So everyone likes to hear that. I feel like, you know, that's also proof, because, you know, we've been a little bit busier, which is a good thing. I do get a little bit of negative feedback when it comes to our, our sign, our exterior sign out there. I mean, it's not a bad thing, 'cause the sign's great. It's user-friendly, it's eye-catching, you know? It's definitely better than the sign we had, but people think, people think that that's an extension of our building and because that sign was purchased using, you know, hotel funds. I mean, people, they don't understand. They're like, well, why, you know? So I do hear that a lot and sometimes people just don't understand or wanna understand, you know, the reasoning behind it. But that's something to maybe think about in the future. And if you have any questions, comments, concerns, you can ask me. Did I speed through things too fast?
I did have...
Absolutely.
Something brought up to me was about affordability.
I'm sorry.
Not being affordable to everybody.
Sure. Be more, like, more expensive?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we... We do. We, our rates are pretty consistent with surrounding...
Because we did a, we did a cost study for MTD and we're on par, if not lower, than even pause and pause in Rockford.
Like per square footage, we're kinda...
That's right. And that's what she mentioned in city policies and things. We've been working with the board on how do we make those things flexible, but still protect the assets, because, you know, all the equipment and all that stuff was bond money and so we just gotta have life spent. But the alcohol policy, we're trying to redesign the food policy as well, because if it'll open it up more...
Absolutely. Yeah, for sure. Because our prices are, you know, very comparable, but, you know, like I've always said, it's like, you know, we, you know, you might be paying eight hundred dollars, for example, for a room, but then, you know, you have to pay this percentage and that just adds up to make it less, you know, less affordable. So I'm, I'm open, you know, I do wanna protect our Civic Center and not, you know, overuse it, but there's definitely, there's, you know, white and black and there's the gray area where we need to find our comfort zone, where we are busy, but not, you know, just, you know, here's the keys, go have fun and then our carpets. where we are busy, but not, you know, just, you know, here's the keys, go have fun, and then our carpets. I mean, there's, there's definitely has to be a balance in that, for sure.
And that's why, that's why you have the policies and stuff.
Yes, for sure.
That's that event insurance, that's, there's some flexibility there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, well, the security's at T and B C. Okay. Earl, Harbor.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure you have this. You know, during the wintertime and this spring, we have very little traffic at Con Brown, both Con Brown and Navigation District. A lot of that had to do with just the weather, the wind, you know how bad the wind's been. Hopefully, this past weekend has maybe turned a corner a little bit. The water temperature is up above seventy-three degrees. Friday was a good day, Saturday was packed. We had a few problems, people trying to launch. It was backed up past the Memorial Tower, but it worked its way out. I counted the boat trailers Saturday at one o'clock. And in Navigation District, there were sixty boats, which is a lot for them. Con Brown, there was ninety-two. We have the capacity in a regular parking to accommodate ninety-seven. So, we were nearly full Saturday.
And that's not including any of the grassy area or anything?
No, there was no one in the grassy area. There was plenty of room, but it was getting full Saturday. Sunday, it was back to normal, no one. I guess everyone was barbecuing. One good thing that's going on now is the barge traffic. You know, we have, on the backside, on the ICW side, we are leasing some space to different barges. In the past, it's been like three or four different companies. So, I've been in contact with this one individual, and all these companies are merging together. In fact, they'll be sending you insurance information, this new company who has just taken over. April's gonna be a very good month. There's been quite a few barges that has tied up. Repairs to the boat launches is on hold. Most of the complaints that I have is Bigelow Street. Bigelow Street, if you drive your car down there, it's all right, but when you pull in a trailer and a boat, you can feel it. And a lot of the problem is, there's a lot of heavy trucks that go down Bigelow. You know, you've got your shrimp trucks in the summertime, you've got your fuel trucks, you've got your trash trucks. And that's a lot of weight, a lot of wear and tear on our roads, and it's getting, it's getting very bumpy about halfway down Bigelow. Also, the approaches to the launches. They put in the concrete when they built it, but they didn't bring it out far enough. So, it's asphalt, and it's, Paul's crews have been down there, and they've patched it, but it's beginning to wear. And now, the water that's in there is saltwater. So, everyone's having to drive through saltwater. You can look at the city truck I have, behind each wheel well is a little bit of rust, so that's saltwater splashing up there, and I'm not getting it all off when I rinse it off. So, somewhere down the road, we sure would like to increase the concrete, add another twenty-five or thirty feet. That would take care of all that. But on the good side, Rock the Dock was, you know, that was April eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. It was very successful, very jammed. Last year, we had right at six thousand. This year, seven thousand to seventy-five hundred people. The dealers were very pleased, lot of traffic in and out, lot of sea trials, which we can go out and trial boat. I don't know how many boats were sold, I haven't got any figures yet. But I do know, I talked to the financial officer for Ron Hoover, which is out of Rockport. And I talked to him about two o'clock Saturday, and he said, "I just got to signing four contracts." So, my guess is there was some boats sold, I just don't know how many. Thursday, that was Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Thursday, before that Friday, there was a get-together for all the dealers, for their helpers, their families. And I don't know if any of y'all were there, but you could see, if you were there, you could see where your hot tax money was going to or part of it. All the food was free for them, they had a great time, the only thing they had to pay for was a beer. And on TV, I guess you probably saw a lot of advertising, they had a lot of advertisements, a lot of commercials. So, with y'all's help, with the hot tax money, you helped make it a very successful boat show. And in the coming months, it looks good. There's quite a few fishing tournaments scheduled, they begin in May. Let me see how many we have. One tournament in May, we have two in June, three in July, three in August, and two in September so far. I was looking at the list, and there's only two of those tournaments are local, local guys. One's the Haney Tournament, and then the very first one is presented by Rockport Marine. The rest of them are people from out of town, a lot, and there's one, two, three from San Antonio. They're bringing people down, they're gonna spend money in our town, you know, they're gonna stay in our hotels. So, it looks good. It looks good for the summer. And plus, we have in July the fourth, we have a big, there's a big July fourth celebration going on. Graham, I think he's involved in it with the pie eating contest, and the stuff with the kids, boat shows, I mean, not boat shows, boat parades. So, it's nice, it's gonna be fun, it's gonna be a good, good, good summer. Any questions?
I have a question, you said you had ninety-two...
Is it easy?
I hope. You had ninety-two boats?
Yeah, there was ninety-two, ninety-two trailers Saturday at one o'clock.
Okay, and when you were down there, did you happen to notice how long it took for all those ninety-two boats to get in the water?
Well, there was two instances that they were backed up past the memorial.
And that, we got two ramps closed, is that correct?
Well, yeah, two ramps are closed.
It's one ramp and two. So, there's six.
Did we just send Naismith a bill on that, or what?
I'm sure that's all part of the legal, the legal pleadings to be filed very soon.
Well, you had to keep in mind that, you know, when the people are launching, there's also people pulling out.
Absolutely.
You know, so it's a double thing. Anything else?
The library, James is not here, James. The library board will be hosting a Illinois reception for him on Friday from eleven to three. So, they're encouraging the community and the council to go, saying their goodbyes to James. We do have six applications for library director, we'll be holding interviews this week as well in conjunction with the library board. Between October and March, we circulated ten thousand four hundred books, there were seventy-four hundred internet users, ten thousand six hundred people passed through the library, one thousand seven hundred and thirty of those were children, and we received donations totaling fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. And our last department update is all the works.
Do you have my, do you have anything up there?
Yeah, we got it right here.
Oh, you got it? Got all the pictures and stuff?
Oh, yeah.
There should be some updated ones that are on the tank, or they're not. I'm gonna go through what's been going on from January, the fourteenth, twenty-fourteen through March, twenty-fourteen. Just go through the work orders the guys have been working on. You should have those, streets, fifty, eighty-eight. That does not include what the guys do, like, on the daily, weekly, monthly schedule, you know, like the parks department and stuff like that. These are just work orders, eighty-eight is what people call in, or brush pickup, or stuff like that. Water calls, there was forty-five of those, after-hours calls, twenty. Do you have fire hydrants up in your thing? Hydrants flushed, okay. So, the next one would be lactide samples, twenty-seven. Out of the whole month, they'll take like nine of them, and you take like three every week. And if you get one bad, then the state will let you know. So, Candy Torres, the guy that left here, he was doing a pretty good job doing that. So far, since he's left, we've already taken about two samples. You know, the whole week, we finished the whole month. But we did take some for the tank, they got, that's part of the highlights there. We did take two samples for the water tank, they got put back in service, and those came back good. So, that'll be the last part, I'll let you know, it's part of the good news.
That is now the inside of the tank. If you guys recall, what that picture looked like before, do you want me to pull up the before picture?
We're kinda jumping ahead, but that's the finished product on Avenue A tank.
That is absolutely amazing. And if you haven't seen the new logos up on there?
Okay. The sewer calls, we had thirty or seventy of those, after-hours, twenty-nine. Animal control called, they're quite extensive there, five hundred and thirty-nine. After-hours, sixteen. Adoption, they had thirty-five. Rabies, vouchers, forty-eight, and rescues, they had nine of them. Did I put the chingles up there, sir?
Paul, I have a question on the animals control, how are we dealing with coyotes and stuff?
We got traps, obviously, I actually bought a coyote trap, northern, I think they had one there, I just got it Thursday. So, she's got it out there.
I know about evening time.
Yeah, she's got it out there, we're just trying to see what she catches. They're pretty smart.
But I know they're, they're bad.
Yeah, she's got them out there, I think on Seventh and Greenwood, plus where you live, she's got a trap out there.
I can get here on Thursday or something.
Yeah. The highlights, myself and two other employees, we went to a class in San Antonio. That picture you got there, it's like a circuit board, we had like ten stations, that's only one of ten that we had to do. And on the far right of that picture, you'll see some toggle switches, after we wired everything up, the instructor would pull one of those toggle switches, and something would go off. So, we had to find out what went off, what he did. So, it was a pretty interesting class, because I'm not an electrician, I don't claim to be one.
Well, Paul, guys, that's really necessary, because they have so much electrical systems that go out with the storm pumps, and then our SCADA system, and all of our systems. And before we call an electrician out, which is usually after-hours, on-call, double rate, it's important for them to be able to troubleshoot some of that, so a little money on training, five cents money on the machine.
That's what this class was about, including those new storm pump stations, they're gonna be on floats, so we can troubleshoot what's wrong with them before calling somebody. All right, moving on to the storm pumps. The storm pump, that one you see there with the big motor on top, and don't look at the building, because we're gonna get a new one. We're just waiting for everything.
No, I want them to see the building, our building had skylights showing through it. I mean, and then we wonder why our things don't last, they're exposed to the elements. The environment is harsh enough with what's passing through it, but...
Is that pump in the county sewer call?
Yeah, the one that, the big one there, that's a hundred-horse pump. It pumps, I think I put down eighteen thousand five hundred gallons a minute. We have, and the one on the bottom, that blue one, that's just an old picture, we've already, that's the new pump, but we've already fabricated everything that goes with it, piping. We just put the motor in, and we did, you know, we actually tried that one, that one works good, but we haven't got any rain to try the bigger one. So, that's kinda where we're at with that.
When is your rate to rain?
Yeah. And this is a tank right there, so we went over that. We did, I did take a picture of the current logo there, it's already been done.
That's the before, this is the before.
The one on commercial's gonna look kinda like that one, too, before we start, they'll start on that one on, probably this week. We're supposed to drain it tomorrow, so we'll start on that one.
Can they already, because I know in my house, I have hardly any pressure at all.
On your house, in your area? Oh, had to check that out. Okay. All right, any questions?
Maybe the logos, were they gonna have the Panther emblem on it?
I think the one on the...
The elevated tank with...
On Wilson.
The elevated tank, the private superintendent sent me a new logo. I don't even know if the current school board has reviewed the logo, so I'm gonna send it to them and let them have comment, because I don't wanna put up a logo that school doesn't approve of.
It's just the head, I think, Panther. That one, that logo they put on that tank there is twenty-five feet diameter, it's twenty-five feet diameter. You can see it in quite a bit of ways.
It looks, it looks very...
Okay.
Paul, Paul, guys, it's constantly on, I mean, all of the staff is constantly on it. There really isn't a time, a weekend, that I'm not calling Paul and Paul to... And Eric will do in here.
Eric Fiarial, with LNV, I'm project manager. Y'all hired us a few weeks ago to complete the construction plans and specifications for the Matlock project, grant project through the CDBG project, CDBG program. Those plans and specifications have been completed. The project advertised for bids last Wednesday in the local paper. It will advertise again this week, this Wednesday. We'll have a pre-bid meeting on Thursday morning, and then the bids will be opened here at City Hall on Thursday, Thursday after that, May first, at two PM.
We might be done by October?
Yeah, and we've, we're on a...
Been waiting several years, and it took y'all a month?
Something like that, yeah, yeah. So, we're, you know, moving the project forward, there's still, you know, some TCEQ permit that we need to, or review that we need to submit. So, we won't, we'll open the bids, but we won't, we won't award them right away. Text-up permit for Boring under Wheeler, and so, by, you know, because of the grant regulations, we can't actually award until all permits are in hand. So, we're actively soliciting the bids, we've got a list of bidders that we've invited to bid. We've sent the plans and specifications electronically to all the local plan rooms, ABC, virtual plan rooms, where the contractors have subscriptions to, and they're able to view the plans online, so, moving forward.
Can you give an annexation update really quick?
Sure.
I got a question also, twenty-seven, twenty-five.
Ah, teeny, million-dollar question.
Thank you, Eric.
We'll jump to FM twenty-seven, twenty-five, Ms. Greel.
Actually, you know, when I landed here, and you guys have said, "There's a lawsuit, there's a lawsuit, there's a lawsuit," I have found stuff, so...
Well, there's a timeframe on this, too, isn't there?
Yes, we've been working with staff, going back, almost what I have to describe kind of as square one, because we wanna make sure anything that we do moving forward meets the requirements of the different court actions. So, we've gone back and gotten our hands on the different court actions and agreements that have taken place up to now. And we just found the last missing piece yesterday, and we've had a chance to go through that. So, now, we have, I think, a very clear picture of what we need to do to meet all of the different agreement requirements. And so, we'll be putting together, the first thing we need to do is sit with the city staff, Public Works in particular, and get the background information as far as the existing system, both the City of Aran's Pass and City of Ingleside, because the two cannot be separated as we address these issues and the agreement requirements. And get all the technical background information, and then we'll develop a project scope, a well-defined project scope with estimates and timeframes. We don't do anything without knowing what we're gonna do, and when we're gonna do it, and have a very good understanding of why we're doing it, and so...
Do we have issue, any more issue with the right-of-way, what space is left in the right-of-way? Do we have issue, anywhere issue with the right-of-way, what space is left in the right-of-way on Thursday, twenty-five?
One thing that we've done in our preliminary design, or preliminary investigation, I can't even say design, is that we've called, we've done a one-call, and I'm actively discussing and coordinating what's actually out there in the right-of-way with active pipeline companies, you know, by law, if we're gonna dig, we've gotta call them, and what we've told them is, you know, we're trying to find where they're located, see if there's any room in the right-of-way, 'cause...
There was a question on Ingleside, on the bay running their water line, in whatever right-of-way was left, and so that would make our project more expensive, because there's an acquisition of right-of-way now that's required, because we didn't get started when you saw the project several years ago.
Yeah, so as a matter of fact, I've got meetings tomorrow onsite with a couple of pipeline guys to see where, you know, to coordinate where the potential water line can go, and where their existing lines are. So we're actively trying to figure out what the best solution is, and what the most cost-effective to the city is.
So, and quickly reading through that agreement between the city of Rennes Pass and the city of Ingleside, our critical date is in twenty fifteen, which, you know, a year off may sound like a lot of time, but we have to really get organized, well, I think we're taking a good organized approach, but get all the pieces in order, and get things, keep things moving at the rate that they're going.
The funds available from the prior bond sale, and we did save some money on the tank stuff, so if there's, if there's acquisition, or if there's items that are necessary, we've got some contingency. Were you saying we're actively, how, what do you foresee us starting the project there?
Well, the, oh, timeframe.
I'm just getting nervous, I'm getting nervous. I know the tale in, if we don't get there...
I would hesitate to, to...
Just the ballpark.
Ballpark?
August nineteenth, twenty-first.
Oh, no, no, no. But I don't know, it's a little premature at this point in time, but within one or two more council meetings, we, I think we should be able to have a schedule for it.
That's, that's better than... It's how many miles of water, two?
It's, yeah, it's about two, two and a half is what we've measured out from where we think the connection is.
So approximate construction timeframe for two and a half miles of water?
I mean, if it's in the right-of-way, and it's, you know, there are some obstructions, but, you know, it's just water line, so they, you know, I'd say...
Three or four months?
Yeah, yeah.
Talked about a little less. That's, that's actual construction time that...
So we still have some good amount of time, but, you know, we're, we don't wanna say we've got, like Johnny said, we don't wanna say, well, we still have a year, you know, we're still actively trying to move forward, and...
So you never seem to, you always seem to run into some, pick ups on the road, or bumps in the road.
Well, and that's why we're coordinating all of the legal research, and paralleling that effort with the technical research out in the field, so, just so we can get there faster. But at the same time, making sure that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, so we don't have to retrace any of our steps. Any other water line questions? As far as the annexation study, last time I was here, you, some of you may have seen some of the maps that we put together based on information that we acquired from the Sampat appraisal district. We've moved forward with that, and we're taking the map information and using it to get information out of their, I'll call it their other system, their, I'll call it their tabular system, and we're starting to put together these reports that we'll be using to review all, basically all of the potential land parcels within the study areas, and then that will be the basis of the recommendations that we bring to you. I would hopefully say two council meetings from now, we hope to bring you a recommendation for the first exempt proceedings. And then, once we get concurrence, then we'll start the steps necessary to move forward on that action.
So that's the May twenty something.
Yeah.
There's just, yeah, there's many, many parts and pieces to get ready and get together, and those have to be timed in accordance with state statute requirements. And we have to make sure we don't put step B before A, or we have to start over.
We also, most of the study areas in San Trisho County, so we'll have to have some appearance at, Commissioner Shkreman.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I wanted to give council an update on the building on Wheeler, I did talk to Judge Simpson, and Commissioner Price. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They, they, I have email discussion with the judge, and also a phone call, they are going to complete it. Apparently, they took off more of the building than they thought when they moved it, so they're gonna rescurt it and make it pretty again. They also committed to us in the zoning request, landscaping and screening, and a beautification of the building altogether, and they're still committed to doing that. I did raise your concern about maintenance in the right-of-way, they're going to address that. They've asked that we maintain our portion of the right-of-way as well, so...
Did they even get permission when they drove that thing up here?
Yes, they got it, they got it on the...
No, I mean, drove it through town?
Well, yes.
All I know is they just showed up there.
I think, I think it was a building I've seen.
That's your text office that worked?
That is ridiculous. That's, that's... I'm just disappointed that the county put that building here in Rennes Pass, it just totally upset me. Our commissioner for allowing that to happen.
Don't put a piece of crap like that?
I'm sorry?
Would they put a piece of crap like that in Portland?
No. That's my update on the building. I mean, it's, it really is totally unacceptable.
Let's just watch it.
It's all about, we've hosted for all... And perhaps it would be appropriate to drop something to Commissioner Shkreman, under the American County judge. If I had any more updates, I don't know what they are anymore.
All right, so that's all of thirteen, that brings us to our item number fourteen. Our citizen comments, floor's open, you have three minutes, state your name and your business, let's get going.
You should've let me talk first, because I wanted to invite everyone here to our Relay for Life that's going to be held on May the sixteenth at the, this year it's gonna be at Ingleside. Last year we were here. But Relay for Life is the signature event for the American Cancer Society, and there's a relay going on somewhere in the United States every day practically, and it to raise money for the American Cancer Society. So what I'm here tonight for is to ask if city council will donate to Relay for Life.
It's, did we miss it as an action item? I didn't see it.
Yeah, it has to be listed as an action.
Yeah, it's not listed as an action, when is your event, May?
It's May sixteenth.
We can put it on the May fifth agenda.
Okay.
What is the amount you're requesting?
What, we cannot tell you how much to donate, just whatever you want to, so...
What did we, what did we contribute last year?
I don't think the city contributed anything, did they?
I think it was individual members.
Individual council members donated last year.
But the city did, they, the city did get top spot on the T-shirt because of the council members.
Right.
It was given, the recognition was given to the city.
Send it, send...
For a thousand dollars, and seven hundred and fifty was donated.
Was it?
But that was one of our top contributors, and we don't even have that this year, we have one.
One, yes, we have one top.
And he's right here.
And we appreciate him very much.
What's your name? I'm sorry. Ms. Butler, Ms. Butler, Ms. Butler.
Any questions? We really would like everybody that can to come out for the relay, it's from seven in the morning, I mean, seven at night until on the sixteenth till seven in the morning on the seventeenth. But you don't have to stay all night, but we have, we have a lot, we have a silent auction that has a lot of really nice things in the silent auction, and...
Mr. Relay?
Oh, and we have Mr. Relay that is just really something, it's really something to come and see, and what time is that gonna be, you know?
You'll start at seven to midnight.
Well, I know, but I mean, when's Mr. Relay, that's...
He'll be introduced at seven, then he'll be crowned, he'll be crowned at midnight.
All the time, right, so it's, and if Mr. Relay, whichever man raises the most money that night is crowned Mr. Relay, and it's, we really have a lot of fun, so I invite all of you out, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we'll put you on the May fifth agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
On the top?
We'll make sure you're in the beginning, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Just a special request. I thought this was gonna be a short meeting, but... I know, I don't even...
I'm John Gonzalez, I'm sure you all know me. An issue came up over the last couple of weekends, and I just wanted to assure you all, and as a citizen, I would ask, if I saw an employee working or in a vehicle, I would ask, you know, are you working today? I was working, and I just wanted to leave attention, if I'm driving a city vehicle, I'm at work, otherwise, I'm not driving it. So I just want you all to be assured that that's what the case is. So if anyone has any questions, all they have to do is ask me.
'Cause that's one of the questions they call and ask me.
Yeah.
The first thing, and I'm like, if I'm off, I'm at church, or I get called, or busted aside, or they call me at home, and the first thing I'm gonna do is call her.
Yeah.
Just to ask, it's, it's hard to ask.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I was talking to Mel, 'cause Mel was the person that was with me, and we were working that Sunday, and when Mel got out of the vehicle to go and get a drink, the man was standing outside the store, and he's staring at me. And it's like, I'm gonna say, Mel, he's gonna call somebody, and sure enough, he did, but I mean, but he never asked me, you know, are you guys working today, you know, and I would've been more than happy to tell, let him know what we're doing.
Yeah, 'cause that, the thing, one thing he mentioned, he didn't see his city uniform.
Yes, well, fortunately, what happened was that I did have it on, we were working across the street, there was no air, the door didn't open, so I had my shirt off, we ran to get a drink, and came back, finished working.
Appreciate it, dude.
Yes, sir.
Well, I wanna say something in his behalf.
Yes, ma'am.
He has really been good to us out at the restaurant, so, had super good sandwiches. Six-star water meter.
And just so council understands, I do talk to the staff every opportunity about the issue of perception. Obviously, there's an issue if you see a city employee who appears to be loitering, or appears... When I first got here, there was, there was a rule that they couldn't go to the bathroom at Stripes by Pelican Cove, because there was a taco stand across the street, and honestly, that's not how you govern employees, to get the most out of, out of the work that they do, but I do talk to them about perception, about efficiencies. If you stopped there ten minutes ago, try not to stop there again in the next couple of hours, just because people are watching, and there are, but for all intents and purposes, I think we have probably one of the hardest-working staffs that I've ever had the privilege of working with, and that includes a little city called Decatur that was only four square miles, and didn't have any problems, 'cause they were completely built out, and everybody seemed to have a smile on their face. I still think our staff works harder than that, so, just so you know, we do address it every single time.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ernie Torres. The storage deals for Habitat for Humanity, the one eight hundred block of South McCambe finally got removed, thanks to, to city council people that I've asked, begged, borrowed, whatever. And, but there should be a limitation, when they finish a house, move it within a year. I think this was what, like, three years?
What was, what was still there?
The eight hundred, when they built this home, eight hundred block of Habitat for, it was Habitat for Humanity House.
What remained, the storage, what?
What it is, it's a storage, it's...
They keep their equipment in there.
It's like a box.
Oh, like the Conex box?
Yeah, like a toolbox, and...
It's not a toolbox.
That's where they keep all their stuff, wherever they go from one house to another. And the reason why they leave it there is because they have nowhere else to put it at, and they only wanna pay one time, because it's a nonprofit organization, and they only wanna pay one time to move from here to there. And the reason why it took a while is, my understanding is, they didn't have a lot to build the house, and once they got the lot, and got everything going, and that's why it just got moved, 'cause they're gonna start that house and do something. Yeah, after everything is lined up, so that way, that box won't go from here to there, and have to be stored somewhere else. I think it's to keep out of the cost of having to move it from one place to another, that's why they do it.
But three years, that's pretty good.
It's been a year and a half, I've worked on that house.
The one of...
I would have, two years, maybe two years? It was, uh... Yeah, Joel's house.
Was that about three years?
Does the house have a...
Two years, too many.
Does the house have a garage that it has around?
No, it doesn't have a garage, the only thing that happened, it was put to where it kinda affected traffic.
Oh, I got you.
Kind of.
How long has it been, has it been that long?
Well, he says two years.
It's about two years it was there. The only, the only bad thing about it, if it had turned it sideways, the way they had it sitting there, it was blocking, it was...
And it was so ugly, they could at least paint it and put some flowers on it, you know, make it look pretty good, you know? Also, there's a lot of basketball hoops on street right-of-way, and especially with the wind, you know, what happens if it falls on the vehicles going by when the wind's blowing? Who's gonna pay for the vehicle, the guy's personal insurance, or the city? And it's gonna be a problem when that comes up, 'cause a person gonna not wanna pay the deductible on stuff like that. Scratch my truck, and I'll be mad, you know?
Well, it wouldn't be our liability, we have some authority to occupy the right-of-way.
But who, who enforces that law, the basketball? Oh, okay, here you got too much work to do already, I gotta go start from ground zero. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Does anybody else like to say anything? If not, then that closes our citizen comment, that moves to five fifteen.
Take a move at the adjournment.
Second.
I really thought this was going to be a short meeting.
Huh? Eric.
Yes, sir, I just looked up your name.